Hello and welcome. I'd like to call to order the June 6, 2024 New Hanover County Planning Board meeting. I'd ask that you please turn off or silence all mobile devices. Please sign in if you plan to speak tonight. These meetings are closed captioned for public broadcast, so please speak clearly into the microphone. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Ken Vayfer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and everyone who is able to please stand and face the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to move to the approval of minutes for the May 2, 2024 Planning Board meeting. May I get a motion? Got a motion, can I have a second? Motion is second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. I've been informed that a staff update on the Comprehensive Plan Update Project was not able to be provided at the Planning Board's Agenda Review Meeting on Tuesday. Staff would like to take five minutes at the start of this meeting to provide that update. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda to add a staff update on the Comprehensive Plan Update Project as a new Item 1A? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been amended to add Item 1A. The public hearings, the public hearing item from tonight's meeting will go forward to the County Commissioners' meeting scheduled for Monday, July 22, 2024. The meeting will begin at approximately 4:00 PM and will be held here in the New Hanover County Historic Courthouse. Planning Board Representative for this meeting is Mr. Colin Tarrant. Are you good with that? Excellent. This time, I'd like to read the Code of Ethics. In accordance with the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners' Resolution Adopting a Code of Ethics as adopted on January 4, 2016, it is the duty of all county boards and committees to respect and abide by the New Hanover County Code of Ethics and the performance of their duties. More specifically, all Planning Board members should obey all applicable laws, uphold the integrity and independence of the board, avoid impropriety, faithfully perform the duties of the office, and conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. It is further the duty of every board member to avoid conflicts of interest as defined in North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 160D, Section 109. Does any member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. Now, I'd like to move into our regular agenda items. And the recently added Item 1A, the 2016 Comprehensive Plan Update, Destination 2050. Ms. Boykin.
Supervisor, I'm addressing you today as the Steering Committee. I was unable to attend the Planning Board review, so I have to do it tonight and want to let you know how far we have come. Even though this presentation is five minutes, I'm going to hit the highlights of what we're doing, please know that there's a primary team behind the scenes working diligently to get these things accomplished. The general timeline of this update started in spring of this year and planned to end of fall of 2025. We have put a primary team together, and we've been working diligently trying to get this existing conditions and public engagement all planned together and implemented for starting July, August of this year. We want the public to know that we have a public engagement plan that was approved, and these are intentional strategies. We will not go over them specifically tonight, but we want to know that the voices will be heard, and we'd like to understand what they have to say about New Hanover County as a whole, whether it's favorable or unfavorable. We want all your advice and all your working together with us as a collective to improve and make New Hanover County a wonderful place to live, work, and play. This is the logo we have developed, NAC Destination 2050. 2050 is the horizon of this plan, but every, about every five to seven years, we will be doing an update. This logo was established in-house, and every time you see it, you need to know that there's something to, that's about the comp plan that you need to know. We've been working so hard to get the poll surveys topics together, and these just show a few of those. We will start with those hopefully in July on our website. Poll survey is just a check to see where people are and what they want to say. We established this technical advisory committee. This committee had its, excuse me, introductory, introductory meeting on May 8 and a regular meeting on May 21. This is a 20-member team, which your chairman is involved in, but it's also regional, meaning that the planning director of Brunswick County and Penter County is also on this team. We are in the process of assisting with getting Stakeholder Engagement Questionnaire and engagement interviews and selection of stakeholder engagement groups. We put out a request for qualifications and for a consultant to help us with the housing needs assessment, significant statistically significant public opinion survey, and scenario planning analysis. We're in the process of selecting a consultant at this time. So, this was the original timeline that we gave you. I am happy to say that we have maintained this timeline. So, like I said, in the summer this year, we should be doing public forums, stakeholder engagement interviews, and joint board meeting. So, our next steps, we need to complete the poll surveys, we need to select location, date, and time for a public forum, and consultant negotiation onboarding should happen when the next 30 to 45 days. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Heth.
I have a question. Public forums, how many public forums are anticipated?
We, at this time, we think in three. So, you have an introductory and get some collecting some information. Then we have a forum where we deliver what the results are, then the conclusion of all the entire process, including what the consultant put together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Boykin. Appreciate that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
This time, I'd like to move on to Item 1B, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Western Bank Amendment, Public Draft, Public Comment Draft Release. Ms. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. So, tonight, I'm here to provide an overview of the Public Comment Draft of the Western Bank Amendment to our 2016 Comprehensive Plan. We've been talking about the Western Bank area for a while now, but just, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, when we use that term, basically what we're referring to are the properties on the western banks of the northeast Cape Fear and the Cape Fear Rivers across from downtown Wilmington, between the Isabel Holmes Bridge to the north and the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge to the south. Basically, everything that's within the jurisdiction of unincorporated New Hanover County. And this is a process that has been going on for several years now. It was spurred because of some development proposals, but over the past several years, the Board of Commissioners has had a couple of work sessions. There was a study that was conducted and presented to the Commissioners back in fall, and this is one of the outcomes of that study. So, Katia was talking about the update to our comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan really is one of the biggest pieces that directs the work that my department does, that the county does when it comes to land use in the unincorporated county. And in a lot of areas, it did offer a greater mix of uses. Part of that was a desire, as stated by this plan, to have urban mixed-use development pattern on the Western Bank properties in attempts to reflect what was in downtown Wilmington. What we found through our process over the past several years is that there are some conditions on the Western Bank properties that made the development pattern that you see in downtown Wilmington a little bit more difficult. There are environmental constraints, there are concerns about existing sunny day flooding. And so, we came up with a series of recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, the first of which was to update our comprehensive plan to establish a vision for this area that was more in keeping with what they expected to see at this point, taking into account the high visibility of the properties, and making sure that it was very clear what some of the constraints were in the properties, so that the community, the property owners, and potential developers would be more on the same page as to what was possible in this area. Like everything else in our plan, this is going to inform the work that we do. It's going to inform studies similar to our water quality monitoring studies, similar to the work that we've worked on with CFPUA related to extending water and sewer to the northern parts of the county. It informs potentially development regulations. It informs rezoning applications and the staff recommendations that we make when a rezoning is requested, what's considered by this board, what's considered by the Board of Commissioners, and then if anything is proposed as a by right development, something that's already allowed under the ordinance, it can influence that because of the development regulations that are created out of the plan recommendations. So, this is the general process that we've had for the past several years when it comes to any sort of staff-initiated amendment to our development ordinance or to our plan. Back in March, we presented a concept to y'all. We got your feedback, and I'll kind of go through a little bit about what has been updated in the amendment as the result of that. But today, what we're here for is to just present the information to you ahead of a public release of the amendment tomorrow, so we can get some wider public input. Right now, the conversation has been primarily at the Planning Board level, at the Board of Commissioners level, and there's not been a concerted opportunity for the public to see what is being proposed and to provide any sort of feedback. And so, this is a way to make sure that they have something that they can look at, where if they have questions, if they have concerns, they can report it to this board, to staff, and to the Commissioners early enough in the process where we're able to take those concerns and those questions into consideration before we start moving anything through a public hearing process. The Western Bank Amendment, along with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Priorities Plan that was adopted by the Commissioners on Monday, and the Residential Densities and Infill Policy Guidelines that'll be considered by this board tonight, these were all things that, while we work on the rest of the Comprehensive Plan Update, the Commissioners indicated they thought we needed to move faster in these areas. They wanted to make sure that the conversations that we've been having about Western Bank were stalled for another year and a half. They wanted to make sure that we could move forward with potential funding opportunities for the bicycle and pedestrian priorities, and for the residential densities and infill policy guidelines, as Amy will go over in a minute. There was a desire to have some more guidance onto when density was appropriate and what types of site designs infill projects needed to have, so they could use that while we're updating the rest of the plan. We've had conversations over the past several years indicating that they wanted more information, and so this was one of the attempts for that. So, this amendment about the Western Bank does have three components. The first was the creation of a new place type designation that we're calling Downtown Riverfront. So, the amendment will outline the types of uses that are encouraged in this area. Why? These are the types of uses that are encouraged, the scale of proposed development, and where it's going to be applied on our future land use map. There will be implementation guidelines, and these will be the, basically the, the work that is assigned to staff, things that we would need to go out and do if they were included in the final amendment. It could be creation of new zoning districts. It could be working with CFPUA to iron out some technical guidance. So, this is basically the staff to-do list. And then there's an appendix, and this is where some of the resiliency considerations that have been discussed, some of the existing conditions information that have been discussed. We didn't want to recreate the three documents and reports that we've been, we've prepared over the past several years and put that as an appendix in the plan, but this is something that summarizes some of the high points on that and provides more guidance on some of the resiliency components that are important in an area like Western Bank. I did want to mention three things. One, the application of the place types. Basically, the downtown riverfront shown here in blue is proposed to be applied to all of the properties across from downtown Wilmington that are currently designated as urban mixed-use, except for one parcel that is just north of the Isabel Holmes Bridge, and we are proposing that that be classified as commerce zone. We didn't want to leave one little small parcel with urban mixed-use in this area, and commerce zone is similar to what you see on the rest of Highway 421. The amendment also incorporates a couple of pieces of feedback that we received from this board back in March. One is that there were concerns that without a residential component, that it would not be feasible to actually have a project in the area, which would mean that you would continue to see industrial brownfields, and that was one of the things that we didn't want to see in this area. And so, staff has proposed a mixed-use component to accommodate that residential. We also had a pretty in-depth conversation about height. Staff is still recommending the five-story maximum, but because of the concerns regarding, hey, if we set that at the 75-foot, 100-foot, that might be more typical for five stories, it will limit the possibility of having some of that elevation that we want in terms of a resiliency standpoint. And so, what is stated in the amendment right now is making sure that it's no taller than the USS Battleship. So, again, we will be releasing the public comment, and then that will lead to an update to the amendment that can then be considered by y'all at your meeting in July. The public comment period will run basically at noon tomorrow until noon on June 28. Any comments or questions that we receive over that three-week period, we will be able to take a look at and consider as we're preparing that public hearing draft for you. But of course, any public comments received even outside of that comment period will be forwarded to this board so that you're aware of what people are saying and what they're thinking about the amendment proposed. All of those can be emailed directly to me, and we will have that on our website around noon tomorrow. Anyone who has signed up for our Sunshine List email or our Comprehensive Plan Update email, they will get notice once that has been posted, if someone wants to sign up for those. We do have a little mail icon. If you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the New Hanover County website, the front page, then click on that, and you can sign up for those emails before we release them tomorrow. Y'all have any questions at this time?
No, no ma'am.
I don't have any questions. I'm just going to say, I think that it's great that staff is making this a priority. Certainly, it needs to move faster than the overall revision of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Everybody sitting in this room has got some preconceived idea of what the other side of the river should look like when it's finished, and everyone else is different. This is your chance, if you're sitting in this room with, wherever you're sitting and watching this meeting, this is your chance to get involved, have your opinion known, and make a difference. Staff's doing everything you can to get public input and put that into the mix, and it's a long process, but this is everybody's chance. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Math.
Thank you, Ms. Roth.
Moving along, the remainder of the items on this evening's agenda are public hearings. There are seven items. The format for tonight's public hearing is each side has a total of 20 minutes, 15 minutes for presentation, and then five minutes for rebuttal. As a reminder, this board is only an advisory board. The Board of Commissioners makes the final decision on any of the requests being considered tonight, but public comment tonight can impact our recommendation and what may ultimately be presented to the Commissioners. The next item on the agenda, item number two, request by New Hanover County to amend the New Hanover County 2016 Comprehensive Plan to incorporate an appendix for residential densities and infill development policies. Again, this is a public hearing. We'll hear a presentation from staff, and then the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. At this time, I would like for staff to make their presentation. Ms. Dawes.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. I'll be presenting the Residential Density Draft Amendment, which aims to articulate existing policy recommendations around residential density. These address some of the considerations staff and the board have discussed when determining if a project is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Since the 2016 Comprehensive Plan was adopted, a number of rezoning requests have been submitted, and the Commissioners have expressed a desire to have the plan updated. This will include considerations about how to balance the need for housing supply with concerns about the impact on infrastructure, the environment, and community character. To provide additional guidance while the Comprehensive Plan is being updated, staff has been asked to develop this amendment, which is intended to address concerns expressed over the last few years by citizens. The goal of this Plan Amendment is to provide a tool now that can be used for rezoning cases while the Comprehensive Plan is being updated over the next year and a half. Using the existing plan, this update will clarify density recommendations for place types based on existing neighborhood development and provide examples of appropriate transitions. Again, the intent for this amendment is to be implemented now so the board can consider these tools during public hearings. The draft amendment was released for public comment in May. Since then, staff has received several comments from the public related to concerns about overdevelopment, higher density, multifamily adjacent to single-family development, building height, and lack of regulatory action. Staff has worked to incorporate those comments into the draft under consideration this evening. This includes more explanation about the reason for the project and its focus on providing clarity on existing policy. A chart of existing recommendations for density for each place type and an explanation about factors that affect density recommendations has been added. Specific examples are also provided that explain how to use these new recommendations. Also, more context about transitional features for infill development has been provided along with recommendations and ordinance requirements. Components of the amendment include a summary of the plan's recommendations for place type density, a graphic explaining factors to consider when evaluating a project for density, a narrative detailing those factors and how the presence or lack thereof may call for a lower density within said range, and a chart of sample transitional elements, including graphics and explanations of how and when those elements can be used. This includes information as to when elements are currently required by the county's UDO and when these elements are recommended. The plan outlines a recommended range of densities for each place type. Staff's analysis and recommendations are based on the current recommendations. This means if the density of a project is within the range of a place type, staff finds the request generally consistent with the current plan. However, as it has been noted in the past, the entire range of densities in a place type may not always be suitable for every project, but there is not a tool to guide where a project should fall within a given density range. There are several factors that can impact when certain densities are more appropriate, like water and sewer utilities, access, sensitive environmental features, nearby open space, and commercial centers, and affordability. These factors are what members of the community have expressed are most important and what the Commissioners and Planning Boards should consider during rezoning requests. While staff discusses those factors with customers before they apply, and they are included in the staff report analysis, they cannot be included in staff's recommendation of consistency because they are not directly addressed in the Comprehensive Plan. When evaluating a rezoning, staff takes into consideration the density of the project, not only within the recommendations of the place type, but also in relation to the surrounding density. The purpose, the purpose of place types in the plan is to acknowledge what may be appropriate in one area, the county may not always be so in another. This can be true even for developments within the same place type. Often, newer projects are requesting higher density, but due to the county's historic development patterns, that is often near adjacent or adjacent to existing lower-density neighborhoods. This amendment is intended to establish a scale to help evaluate when higher or lower density is more appropriate. These include those factors we mentioned before, such as proximity to major corridors or intersections, public transit, open space, environmental features, or affordability. Areas shown in yellow on the future land use map are the general residential place type, which you can see encompasses a great deal of land in the county, so I'll use this as an example. This place type recommends a density range from up to eight, for up to eight dwelling units per acre. Under the county's current plan, if there was a rezoning for 10 acres in general residential, anything between eight units and 80 units would be generally consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's recommendations. However, with this amendment, the board and staff would consider the maximum of 80 units more appropriate if the project is along a major road with nearby community-level services and parks, and a lower density may be more appropriate the further a project is from those guidelines, all within that general residential place type. Even after finding appropriate scales of density, there will still be a need for physical transitions. This amendment also provides recommendations for appropriate transitional elements between land uses and densities. These transitional elements are found in the layout and design features of a project and include considerations around land uses and building height, connectivity, stormwater, green infrastructure, roadways, and private drives, and landscaping, accessory elements, and hard barriers. What we've encouraged applicants to do over the past few years is to locate higher-intensity uses closer to existing higher-intensity areas and locate lower-intensity uses closer to existing lower-density and intensity of development. The same goes for building height. It is recommended that any proposed taller structures be located further away from existing shorter structures and near roadway corridors. Minimum standards for these elements exist in the county's UDO. However, when an infill project comes in, staff looks for additional transitional elements. These are things staff already recommends, as they are the items that come up frequently in public meetings. Additional multimodal connectivity is encouraged where possible. Example, this would be an added connection to an adjacent park or a trail to the park. Again, there are minimal UDO requirements for, for these features also, and this amendment recommends considering additional transitional elements, which are a frequent topic in rezoning requests. These features can assist in providing a pedestrian-oriented scale along roadways and between buildings. Following a recommendation by this board, the intent is to forward this to the Board of Commissioners at their July meeting as part of the Track 1 amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dawes. Any board questions for Ms. Dawes at this time?
I have a few questions, and some of it's related to the comments that, from the public that we've reviewed. I think it's important to make clear that the chart of densities that you showed, that chart, that level of density, that was developed in the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Right, so we're not making any suggestion, any proposed changes to those density requirements. They were part of the 2016.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Other questions for Ms. Dawes at this time? We do have one person signed up to speak in support, and Nick, and I don't want to mispronounce your last name, but Nick?
Yes.
If you'd like to come forward and tell us your name and address.
You can stand up, Ezra. Hi, guys. Nicholas Sullivan, I'm a resident of the county, 1205 Beeston Court. Currently... Currently, I serve as the president of the Realtors Commercial Alliance for southeastern North Carolina, and I'm an owner of Eastern Carolina's Commercial Real Estate, which is a commercial brokerage firm here in town. And I can tell you, I'm excited to see these changes. I think that allowing more density makes sense, clarifying the rules for density makes sense, and where it's appropriate, it also makes sense. There's been projects over the years that couldn't get the density in the county, so they voluntarily annexed into the city in order to achieve the density that you can fit on the property. To that effect, I do want to say that I'm not unbiased in this. I'm part of the YIMBY movement, or the Yes in My Backyard movement. We want to see an allowance for density, greater density here, especially where we are and where it's applicable. Going vertical makes sense in some aspects, or having a higher height for your multifamily complexes makes sense. We are having a housing affordability crisis and a housing availability crisis right now, so these changes will help bring more units and more houses to the marketplace, which is something I think that, you know, us commercial realtors are in favor of exponentially. We've got roughly twenty, a twenty-six thousand housing unit shortage right now in New Hanover County. We have been the number-one place for inbound relocations for the last four or five years, and the price of housing has gone through the roof as a result, just simply from pure economics of supply and demand. We can't put enough supply out fast enough for people that are moving here. Yes, people that had trees behind them are going to see the trees gone and houses or apartments built. But people are moving here just like they've moved here, and just like our local residents have seen the changes over the years, it will be okay. We've got great zoning regulations, development guidelines, and rules in place that make projects work. But we do need to allow for more density in the county, as that's where most of the undeveloped land is left, and that's going to be developed, especially with the military cutoff bypass going into I-140 DOT. Had the foresight to put off-ramps onto roads that don't even exist yet, but they know that the growth and development's going to come now. And as a result, we need better density and qualifications for that density to be spelled out easier for people to understand and ascertain what they can and can't do on the property. So, here speaking in favor of this amendment and the change. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. This time, I would like to open up to opposition, but I actually don't see anyone signed up. Is that correct, Ms. Roll? All right, well, we received a good amount of comments prior to the meeting that we've read through, and so we understand where that sentiment is coming from. Any other, I guess there was no opposition. Ms. Doss, do you need another five minutes for any other information?
Not unless you have additional questions for me.
All right. Any additional questions for Ms. Doss? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, we'd like to close the public hearing and move along to board discussion. Any further discussion or motion?
I'd like to just again comment about my review of some of the comments in opposition that were submitted. I think it's important that everyone understand that this amendment is not significantly changing the UDO. This amendment is providing information and clarification about how we review applications for rezoning. And so I think that's important to state, and that it is more a tool for us to understand and evaluate applications than it is to make it easier for someone to develop these property. The review still goes on. We still make the review. The applications still have to meet the requirements of the existing UDO. If it's a rezone, it still has to come before this board. It still has to go to the commissioners. So, this is not, to me, a significant change in what the UDO is. It's simply a clarification.
Agree. Thank you, Mr. Hip, for saying that. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
The move. Oh, well, I guess you'd better make a motion. Let's see, where's my motion? I believe I've got it right here. I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendment to the New Hanover County 2016 Comprehensive Plan to provide guidelines for the evaluation of residential densities and clearly articulated recommended infill development elements. Find it to be consistent with the purpose and the intent of the Comprehensive Plan because it provides a tool intended to enhance the ability to evaluate appropriate residential densities and suitability. Also find recommending approval of the proposed amendment reasonable and in the public interest because it provides recommendations to be used as guidance for infill development and can assist in the public review and process for rezoning and special use permit applications.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, five-zero. Thank you very much. Moving along to the next item. This is a, let's see, public hearing, item number three. Request by Mr. Sam Frank with Warden Smith, PA, applicant, to amend Article Four of the UDO Unified Development Ordinance to change the use of senior living, independent living, retirement community from requiring a special use permit to permitted by right in the rural agricultural district. This is a public hearing. Just like last time, we'll hear a presentation from staff. Then any supporters and opponents will each be allowed fifteen minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. This time, I'd like to ask for the staff presentation. Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. As you just heard, this is an applicant-led text amendment to change the table of uses to allow senior living, independent living, as a by-right use in the RA zoning district. Currently, the use of senior living, independent living, retirement community requires a special use permit for projects in that district. And a by-right use means that, as opposed to going in front of the boards, this would be reviewed strictly at staff level through the technical review committee. Senior living, independent living is defined as a housing development that may contain a variety of housing types designed for and restricted to occupancy of households having at least one member who is fifty-five years of age or older living independently. So unlike other types of senior living, such as a continuing care or assisted living facility, independent living retirement communities have the same form and function as development that is not age-restricted. Often, the primary difference between a senior living, independent facility or development and other apartment or subdivisions is a private covenant restricting that age. Staff identified three county plans that speak directly towards senior housing: the Housing Needs Assessment, the Master Aging Plan, and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The Housing Needs Assessment, also known as the Bowen Report, identified an overall housing gap of twelve thousand rental units and almost seventeen thousand for sale units over the next ten years, and projected an almost twenty-five percent increase in senior households seventy-five and older. The New Hanover County Master Aging Plan is a five-year plan that contains broad goals and objectives with corresponding implementation strategies to address resources and services for older adults who have a wide range of needs. One of the identified strategies is to attract private builders and developers by offering incentives to build lower-cost community living spaces. And one of the ways that local governments incentivize development is through relaxing previous zoning restrictions for specific development or housing types to encourage more private investment. Staff's review of the proposed text amendment found it to be generally consistent with the Comprehensive Plan because the proposed amendment would allow the development of senior housing in a residential zoning district without that additional step of a quasi-judicial hearing or board approval. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan, Housing Needs Assessment, and Master Aging Plan collectively indicate that rising need for senior housing and a need to reduce barriers to the development of senior housing to meet that current and future demand. As a result, staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment as written. Depending on decision by the board this evening, this item would move to the July Board of Commissioners meeting for a final public hearing. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Any questions from the board at this time? All right, thank you very much. We have one person signed up to speak in support. Mr. Sam Frank?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Sam Frank. My address and other information are on the application. I have a presentation, but there's not a lot, a whole lot to say about this one. It's pretty straightforward. The code as it exists today draws a distinction between residential use that is age-restricted and residential use that is not age-restricted. And interesting that the code imposes an additional barrier if you have age restriction. I say interesting because in almost every regard, with regard to intensity of use or dependence on infrastructure or the like, imposition of an age restriction makes that intensity less, as opposed to more. So, the proposed change today, to be absolutely clear, doesn't do anything to change density or parameters of use. The only thing that it allows is for independent living, retirement, senior living, that is, age-restricted residential use to be permitted by right if that residential use is otherwise permitted by right in the RA district. Of course, I agree with Mr. Farrell's conclusions that the change would be consistent with the comp plan. Certainly, removing this barrier to entry makes it more realistic to develop age-restricted residential use in the county, and that is absolutely an area where we are in need of more housing. I'm not going to belabor any more of your time, but I am eager to answer any questions that you may have for me.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Frank. Any board questions for the supporting member? Yes, Mr. Tarrant?
I have a couple of questions, and Frank, it may be for you, it may be for staff, but if we look at the section of the table permitting uses, it classifies as a senior living, independent living, retirement community. Now, my understanding is that that would be, you know, a single-family home type, that type of community, as opposed to like a higher-density, I would say, assisted-living-type facility. Is that correct?
I think it could apply to either. So, the definition of senior living, independent living defines a variety of housing types designed and restricted to occupancy by households having at least one member who's fifty-five years of age, or less. Please do.
Just to, so, in terms of the housing type that this type of senior living, independent living, retirement community could be, it could be a subdivision, it could be attached townhome development, it could be a multifamily development. But I think, to your point of the different types of senior living, there is a separate use for assisted-living facilities that's regulated separately than the senior living independent.
That's the point, I think, I was trying to make as far as the distinction between the two. And when you look at the higher-density, I'll say, multi-story building that we identify more with an assisted-living-type facility, this would not include that. It's a different section of the code, correct?
Correct. The assisted-living, where you have more need, more potentially staff to help assist any tenants, that is a kind of separate use.
And I just, I have a quick follow-up question that staff might be able to... Mr. Frank, feel free to chime in if you have an answer. Why is this being brought as an amendment just in the RA district as opposed to some of the other residential?
A completely reasonable question. That's on me. I proposed it this way. My habit with text amendments is to propose to change as little as needed in the current circumstance. And this is motivated by potential senior, independent living in the RA district, and that's why I proposed it this way. If you were to suggest that the other P's ought to be changed on that table as well, I certainly wouldn't object.
And that might be a question for staff. I mean, have we looked at that feasibility of that? Do we anticipate this, as far as the same issues that we're talking about in the RA district? Are we going to be facing the same things, or the same concerns in the other residential districts?
I wouldn't be surprised. We've had conversations with some of the commissioners over the past several years about why we have the requirement for a special use permit for some of our senior living. It hasn't risen to the point where it's a staff-initiated. It may be something that we get direction from the commissioners to include in an upcoming maintenance amendment, but there is no specific reason why staff would see that the RA change would be any different than the change in other zoning districts.
Any further questions for staff or the applicant? All right, thank you very much. There's no one signed up in opposition. So I would like to close the public hearing and open it up for board discussion. Any discussion or a motion? Mr. Hip?
It seems reasonable to me, especially in the RA, that the comment regarding the other special, the other zones that require special use, those tend to be more single-family residential developments, R-20, R-15, and personally, I can see where that might require some additional oversight and make it a little heavier lift in the rural agricultural areas. And one of the things I asked the staff earlier was exactly where this RA is. Apparently, it is limited to the north, the northwestern portion of the county.
That's correct.
So, it's not like there's RA all over, all over the county that we're going to start seeing these permitted-by-right developments.
Thank you, Mr. Hip.
What would be the most likely dense project we would see as far as a building with different units in it?
Mr. Farrell, if you could speak on densities that are common in that.
So, the RA recommends a density of one dwelling per acre. So that would be about the extent of that density.
The density stays the same, it's just the use.
Yeah, correct. The density of the use, the density that we apply in the RA district would apply like we would any other residential development.
All right. Any further discussion or entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Tarrant?
So, I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendment to the New Hanover County Unified Development Ordinance to allow the use of senior living, independent living, retirement community as a by-right in the RA rural agricultural zoning district. Find it to be consistent with the purpose and intent of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan because it provides for a range of housing types, opportunities, and choices for seniors. I also find recommending approval of the proposed amendment reasonable and in the public interest because both the Housing Needs Assessment and the Master Aging Plan provide a need for additional senior housing to serve current and future demand.
All right, we have a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, five-zero. Thank you very much. Moving along to item number four. Rezoning map amendment, application Z-24-05. Request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions applicant to rezone approximately 0.93 acres zoned RA rural agricultural located at 4737 Castle Hain Road to CZD B2 Regional Business for two commercial structures totaling eighty-seven hundred square feet for the use of general retail, for a tire store, and other limited uses. This is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff. Then the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed fifteen minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. This time, I'd like to ask staff for their presentation. Mr. Biddle?
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the board. This evening's request is for conditional rezoning from the residential district, rural agricultural, to the regional business district, B2. The proposed rezoning is 4.93 acre parcel located in Castle Hain, and is the home of Dad's Tire Shop. Located at 4737 Castle Hain Road, the forty thousand five hundred and ten square foot parcel has historically been used for both residential and commercial purposes, though designated as rural agricultural since nineteen eighty-five. At the time of initial zoning, the purpose of the district was to provide for very-low-density single-family residential development that is compatible in scale and character to rural and agricultural settings. Since then, however, this portion of the corridor has seen a number of light industrial and commercial rezonings take place as evident by this image of the surrounding zoning districts. districts. Via this aerial photograph, we can see that the parcel contained a single-family residence on the southern portion of the lot, whereas a commercial tire store has been in operation for approximately 20 years. Please note that the single-family residence has recently been demolished, leaving the southern half of the lot vacant. These two pictures detail the existing site conditions. The image on the left is of Dad's Tire Store, taken from the corner of Castle Hain Road and Sunday Road, whereas the image on the right is of the now vacant portion of the lot. Here are two examples of single-family residences one may find in the RA district. And here are two examples of the proposed principal land use, contractor office, and general retail sales. The applicant's concept plan details their proposal to conditionally rezone the lot from RA to CZDB2. While the site has historically been used as a tire store and is considered illegal non-conforming use, the proposal includes subdividing the lot, developing a 3,000 square foot flex space that will be separated into two 1,500 square foot offices, shifting the existing septic and well from its current location, and installing an underground stormwater facility and parking space. It should be noted that attached to the rear of this tire store is a structure that would be encroaching into the proposed B2s setback. The applicant has conditioned the removal of this structure, and in its place, they're proposing to put in a 15 foot by 30 foot tire shed that would be attached to the northern portion of the existing structure. Finally, the lot has four existing access points, two on Castle Hain Road, as seen here, and then two on Sunday Road. This map details the approved development in the vicinity. And as detailed in the concept plan, here are the four points of full access on the parcel, again, two on Castle Hain Road, two on Sunday Road. The traffic impact will see an increase of an approximate 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM peak hour trips, which is far below the threshold for traffic impact analysis. And regarding compatibility of the proposal, it is evident that both the requested and existing uses are similar in nature and impact of nearby commercial activities. The proposed rezoning is 4.93 acres of the, along the Castle Hain Road corridor, and it should be noted that at 40,510 square feet, the subject lot is precluded from subdivision due to the current zoning district's dimensional standards, which require a lot to meet, meet a minimum of 30,000 square feet. The comprehensive plan designates this property as being part of the community mixed-use place type. This place type includes commercial uses and also encourages infill development. The proposed conditions are a combination of both applicant and staff-led considerations towards development. They include limiting the principal land uses, the removal of a non-conforming structure, the incorporation of an easement for the utilities to be shared between the two lots, exterior lighting considerations, and the retention of two trees that are regulated by the UDO. Should the rezoning be approved, development of the site will be subject to additional development review to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions concerning it or the staff reports. Mr. Scott James of the WMPO and Mr. Tim Lowe of County Engineering are here to answer any questions within their expertise, and the applicant, Ms. Cindy Wolf, is here with a presentation of her own, and she'll be able to answer any questions with more depth. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Biddle. Any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Chair, I had one quick one.
Yes, Mr. Hitt.
Did I understand you to say that, that the parcel will be subdivided into two separate parcels?
Upon the successful rezoning. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to invite the applicant up for her presentation. Ms. Wolf.
Thank you very much. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm here with Rick Meadows, the owner of the property. The records actually show that Dad's Tire Building was constructed back in the 1970s. It might have at that time been a large barn where the owner serviced his vehicles, but it has been an ongoing business since the mid 1990s. As Wendell pointed out, in 2023, the main house was destroyed by fire. It has since been demolished along with the other two red X accessory buildings that were on that lot. The yellow X constitutes a shed that would be removed upon approval of this rezoning. The zoning map, as he said, also showed was that there are businesses up and down Castle Hain Road at this point. Certainly, there's the B1, Samo and I. It's a variety of different uses, but we're out in the rural section of the county right now at this point, and that the comprehensive land use plan does recognize that the corridor along Castle Hain Road is certainly viable for a mixture of uses, services, and changes. This is the site plan. If approved, it would be divided into two lots, which is eligible for if it were a B2 zoning district. The existing tire store is as you see it, and what would happen if this was approved and that rear building were taken off would be the adequate buffer and setbacks would be applied. The new site would be totally redeveloped and new driveway permit, all of the landscaping, and then marginal landscaping we would propose for Dad's Tire to bring that into conformance with the street yard landscaping. This would be a maximum building size of 25 foot in height and 3,000 square feet in gross floor area. This is sort of an example of what he has in mind as far as an attractive facade facing Castle Hain Road, but still utilitarian in its type of flexible use. So with that, we certainly believe that the petition is consistent, reasonable, and in the public interest. We certainly try to encourage new businesses and maintaining existing businesses, but this is an opportunity in a conditional use district that the Dad's Tire can be brought into better compliance than it is today, and we do believe that the proposal provides an orderly and acceptable transition along Castle Hain Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wolf. We appreciate you working with these local businesses and promoting them. I guess really my, and I also appreciate the, the underground stormwater detention. I appreciate that being added, and the tree preservation. I guess my only real question on, on the site plan would be regarding the driveways, knowing that there has been a push to try to limit as many access points on Castle Hain in, in other parts of Castle Hain. Have, have you had any early discussions with anyone, MPO, anybody on that? Or what, what are your feel on that?
Nick Dries gave his preliminary review as is requested by staff generally, and he didn't have any comments other than the requirements of a new driveway permit onto Castle Hain Road.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant at this time?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Hitt.
Ms. Wolf, the plan looks very reasonable, and I appreciate their, their attempts to bring into compliance by removing the shed. My question was, does the shed currently have a concrete floor or a hard floor? And if it does, would that be pulled, that, that element also be pulled out of the setback?
Yes, it would have to be.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, Ms. Wolf. We do not have anyone signed up in opposition, so at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and go to board discussion. Any other thoughts on this?
Mr. Chair, your comments regarding driveways seem to suggest looking at a shared driveway. It seems that if they're separate parcels, there's some difficulty there. That was the reason I asked about separate parcels. But also, some of the trees they want to maintain are in a location that makes, again, a joint curb cut difficult.
Right. And they still have to navigate that, that whole DOT process, and something could change in that process.
Right. Right. So in general, I think it's not an unreasonable submittal.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Matthews.
My only comment is that it looks like this building could be used by two different, two different businesses, and I'm, I'm certainly okay with the, the ones which have been listed here. They're, they're well under 10. From a practical standpoint, I think you're going to want to be real careful about looking at your parking. You do have two businesses there, showed, I believe, by parking spaces and a couple of cars parked in front of the, the overhead doors. You're okay with that, and it meets code, but these uses, I, I'm fine with it. Just, just really be cognizant that parking can sometimes prove to be problematic when you have multi-tenant, but the overall project and, and the design and the layout, I'm fine with.
All right. Thank you very much. I guess at this time, before we proceed with a, a motion and a vote, I'd like to invite the applicant back to the podium based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing. Would you like to withdraw your petition, request a continuance, or proceed with a vote?
We'd like to proceed toward the commissioners, please.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hitt.
I move to rec, I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning to a conditional B2 district. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the rezoning provides for the types of uses recommended in the community mixed-use place type. I also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the application limits uses to those which are more appropriate for the area and additional, and additional conditions reduce impact on adjacent residential areas. The proposed conditions are, one, the proposed rezoning principal use shall be lim, principal uses shall be limited, limited to animal grooming services, contractor office with no outdoor storage, offices for private business and professional activities, instructional services and studios, personal services, general retail sales, minor vehicle service station, and warehouse. Two, the attached shed that encroaches into the rear setback is to be removed, bringing Dad's Tire Store into compliance with the required setbacks. Three, a septic and well easement approved by New Hanover County Environmental Health shall be recorded with the registers of deed, guaranteeing access and maintenance for the existing septic system and any future improvements. Environmental health approval of the septic system and well shall be required prior to issuance of construction permits for the flex commercial space. Four, exterior lighting, including luminaires and security lighting shall be fully cut off, shall be fully cut off fixtures that are directed downward in compliance with the figures of the UDO. In no case shall lighting be directed at or above a horizontal plane through the lighting fixture. Five, the two significant trees identified on the concept plan shall be permanently retained on site.
All right. We have a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Moving along to the next item, item number five. Zoning map amendment application Z-24-06, request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions applicant on behalf of the Lully Investments LLC property owner to rezone approximately 0.86 acres zoned R-15 residential located at 501 and 505 Manassas Drive to CZDB2 Office and Institutional for one commercial structure totaling 8,000 square feet for the use of medical and dental office and clinic and other limited uses. Again, this, this, like the last several, is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff, and the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. This time, I would like to invite staff to make their presentation. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you, Chair. Just heard, this is a request to rezone approximately 0.86 acres from the R-15 residential district to a conditional O&amp;I office and institutional district. Project, the project is located on the corner of Manassas and Carolina Beach Road. The R-15 district in this area was established in 1971. At the time, the purpose of the district was to ensure housing served by private wells and septics could be developed at lower densities. Since that time, the Carolina Beach Road corridor has experienced a transition to higher-density residential and mixed-commercial districts from Monkey Junction, from the Monkey Junction growth node to the Halliburton Parkway. From the aerial photography, we can see the site is currently wooded and is bordered to the north and east by residential development, with commercial development to the south and west along Carolina Beach Road. This is an aerial of the site with the images of the property from different angles. Here are examples of nearby residential development. And here's an example of development in the O&amp;I district and an example of a medical office near Monkey Junction. Concept plan includes a two-story, 8,000-square-foot commercial building with associated parking along the front with access on the Carolina Beach Road. CFPUA has confirmed the nearest public sewer is approximately 1,500 feet away from the site. Due to the distance from public utilities, the project proposes a private septic system to serve the property. Project includes a solid wood privacy fence to provide a visual screen from adjacent residential development, and also includes a proposed underground stormwater facility away from the septic system. A soils analysis was provided with the application indicating the site is suitable to support the system. Project also includes a public access easement along Carolina Beach Road for any future bicycle pedestrian infrastructure. There are two subdivisions currently in development in the area. While the site is on the corner of Manassas and Carolina Beach Road, DOT conducted a preliminary review, review of the site and limited access to right-in, right-out only on Carolina Beach Road. Southbound traffic on Carolina Beach Road would utilize a U-turn approximately 1,000 feet south of the site or an available U-turn further down Manassas Drive. It's estimated the project would result in approximately 20:00 AM and 50:00 PM peak hour trips. Proposed rezoning is under the 100 peak hour threshold that requires a traffic impact analysis. Carolina Beach Road is currently over capacity in the vicinity of the Manassas Drive intersection. However, the estimated traffic, traffic generation for the project is moderately low, and the proximity of the proposed uses to existing residential neighborhoods could reduce some of those longer trips on Carolina Beach Road. In addition, the project would be subject to NCDOT engineering review through the driveway permitting process. Property is located south of the Boeraberg Marketplace that includes a grocery store, pharmacy, and other services. Broadly, the Carolina Beach Road corridor has seen increased interest in higher-density residential, and there has been a trend in commercial and mixed-use projects along the highway. The comprehensive plan designates this property as urban mixed-use, which promotes a mix of residential, office, and retail uses at higher densities. This type, this place type encourages office, retail, mixed-use, commercial, and residential uses. The proposed list of limited uses focuses on community-level services and businesses, and business uses in closer proximity to nearby subdivisions. Additionally, those neighborhood-level services, again, could help reduce the need for longer vehicle trips along the Carolina Beach Road corridor and would serve as an appropriate transition between the highway corridor and those neighboring residential developments. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan because the proposed density and housing type, sorry, because the proposed limited uses are in line with the recommendations of the place type and is reasonable in the public interest because the development would act as an appropriate transition between the road and existing residential development. As a result, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request with several conditions related to landscaping, signage, exterior lighting, limitations on, limitation on uses, tree preservation, fencing, and the provision of a public access easement. Staff has not received any additional comments since the publication of the packet. And finally, should this rezoning be approved, development of the site would be subject to the additional review of the technical review committee. This concludes my presentation. Scott James of the WMPO and Tim Lowe of County Engineering are here. I'm available to answer any questions. are here. I'm available to answer any questions, and the applicant is here and has a presentation as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Farrell. Any board questions for staff at this time? Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite the applicant up for her presentation. Ms. Wolf.
Hello, again, I'm Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of the Lululee, which is substantially Dr. Nathan Graves, a dentist here. His current office is up in the Harris Teeter Shopping Center, just north of this site, basically. We appreciate staff's thorough introduction. I won't belabor it, but we're on the northeast corner of Carolina Beach Road and Manassas. What's interesting is I did the veterinarian facility years and years ago, and this, I think, makes a perfect bookend as far as an office and institutional type of use, which is very site-specific. So this is the site plan. We went back and forth with different variations of access to Manassas Drive, which was sort of the original DOT. They didn't want extra driveways on Carolina Beach Road. However, with the improvements that have been made to Manassas Drive for the double lanes and the depth of the site, that was going to be problematic to have that driveway, and also beside the residence, residential driveway that's right at the other corner. So, traffic engineer got involved, and they went back and forth with DOT. So one of the provisions of our right-in, right-out access, of course, is to be as far from the intersection as possible, but also it'll be required of this developer to extend that turn lane so that the taper actually begins at Manassas right past the signal and goes all the way up to where it now goes, just north of this site, to a commercial Beyond that, we have all of the parking required. This particular project will be required to have a septic system. The sewer is just too far away to make it viable for a single user to do those types of extensions. That being said, there is water along the frontage, so it will have public water. If the sewers ever run out to this area, we have that ability, and it wouldn't affect anything. It would just provide more of a buffer to the rear With that, we appreciate staff's recommendation that, of its consistency. We think, again, that businesses should be encouraged, and whereas Dr. Graves is currently in a rental situation in a shopping center, this is a perfect opportunity for a standalone doctor's office for he and his clients. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Wolf. And I think I misunderstood. So, you have gotten away from the Manassas Drive and are only going on the Carolina Beach. We had, we had both plans.
You're probably looking at the plan that went to the community meeting, so sometimes we have to be careful of that. But yes, the plan here and this plan is what is being reviewed tonight.
Excellent. All right. I don't, any board questions for the applicant at this time? Mr. Hip.
Sorry, I'm not sure it's for the applicant. It might be for staff. Farrell, can you go back, Ms. Wolf, to that site plan? So I'm always, I've been very encouraged of late to see an attempt, at least, to address public access and the potential for some type of multi-use path along Carolina Beach Road, and this applicant has offered to provide a 20-foot public, public access easement. But on this plan, we see that the, the parking extends into that 20-foot public access. So the question, Farrell, what, what is the intended use of the public access easement, and what does a public access easement allow the public to do?
So as a, sorry, so as a public access easement, it would allow that access by the public, you know, in terms of the particular site layout, as we have it here, where it's an overlay of the easement over that parking, that would be something that would need to be adjusted if this is approved as part of the TRC review, to accommodate.
So that would be addressed at some point during the review?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Hip, I'll mention too that this is part of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Priorities Plan recommendations because we know that there is an interest in installing a multi-use path along Carolina Beach Road in the future. We are asking this of applicants.
I'm aware of that, and I certainly appreciate this applicant and other applicants in, in the recent past have, have offered to do that. I just had the question about how that public access easement and parking would interact.
In a case like this, I believe that, or in my experience, the 20-foot is so that they have adequate space to maneuver, obviously.
Around.
Now that being said, part of the path could even be in the Department of Transportation right away, as long as there's a reasonable recovery zone between the edge of pavement and the property line or the bike path. In this particular case, I did make sure that those last couple spaces were over 10 feet away, which is generally the width of a multi-use path.
Thank you.
And those couple spaces could be backed off if necessary, but I'd rather be approved for the full complement.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very, very much, Ms. Wolf. We do not have anyone signed up to speak in opposition. This time, I'd like to close the public hearing and open for Or a motion.
Um, Chair?
Yes, Mr. Hip.
I'll make a motion, but, but I will say that, again, I think, I think this is a good plan. It's a good use of the, of the parcel access off Carolina Beach Road is, I think, a vast improvement off of the Manassas Drive. And, and I do believe that this, this is the type of development we want to see in these areas, because this is services that can be provided to the community along Carolina Beach Road. So it, it does have the real potential to reduce traffic along Carolina Beach Road, people moving in and out. So I, I just wanted to say that I do think it's a, it's a good use of that parcel. So with that, let me find my script. I will make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the proposed mix of uses are in line with the recommendations of the urban mixed-use type. Am I reading the wrong, am I reading the right? Sorry, I'm just gonna make sure I'm reading it right. Yes, I am. I'm sorry. I will start again. I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because of the proposed mix of uses is in line with the recommendations of the urban mixed-use place type. Also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the project would act as an appropriate transition between highway and existing residential developments. The applicant proposed conditions are: one, street yard landscaping will be installed along Carolina Beach Road to meet current unified development ordinance landscape requirements of commercial projects. Two, any freestanding sign or signs on the site will be monument-style, landscaping around the base of the sign. No pole signs shall be permitted. Three, exterior lighting, including luminaires and security lighting, shall be full cutoff fixtures that are directed downward in compliance with figure 5.5.4(c), full cutoff fixtures of the UDO. In no case shall lighting be directed at or above a horizontal plane through the lighting fixture. Light posts shall be no taller than 12 feet. Four, permitted uses are limited to medical and dental office and clinic, bank, and/or financial institution, business service center, offices for private business and professional activities, instructional services and studios, personal services, with the exclusion of tattoo polish. Five, significant trees identified on the concept plan shall be permanently retained. Six, six-foot-tall solid wood privacy, privacy fence shall be installed along the northern and eastern sides of the property as depicted on the concept plan. Seven, a minimum 20-foot-wide public access easement shall be provided along the frontage parallel Carolina Beach Road for public bicycle and pedestrian use.
Thank you, Mr. Hip. We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Moving along to item number six, it's public hearing, zoning map amendment application Z24-08, request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions applicant on behalf of Giovanni Iboleido and Tanya, property owners, to rezone approximately 4.65 acres of land located at 6634 Carri, Carolina Beach Road from R15 residential to CZD RMFM residential multifamily, moderate density, for a maximum of 64 multifamily dwelling units. As with the last several, this is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. This time, I'd like to ask for the staff presentation. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you again. The applicant, as you just heard, is requesting to rezone approximately 4.56 acres from the R15 residential district to the RMFM residential multifamily moderate-density district. For this board, this project may look familiar. It was presented last year around March to this board, and the site is located at 6634 Carolina Beach Road and was originally zoned R15 in the 1970s. At the time, the purpose of the district was to ensure housing densities remain lower due to the need for private wells and septic systems. Since then, public water and sewer have become available in the area. From the aerial photography, we can see the site is bordered by single-family residential to the east, west, and south, and a religious institution immediately to the north. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. Here are examples of development you might see in the R15 district, and these are examples of multifamily development. The concept plan proposes a 64-unit multifamily development consisting of four three-story, 12-unit multifamily buildings, and two two-story, eight-unit buildings on the western side of the site bordering neighboring residential. The concept plan also includes an amenity center, recreation area, and open space, along with stormwater, and the voluntary addition of a right turn lane off Carolina Beach Road. As you'll note, the parking area surrounds the development, providing an additional spatial buffer between the multifamily units and neighboring residential uses, along with privacy fence. There's one subdivision and three TIAs in the immediate vicinity of the site. Site has direct access to Carolina Beach Road, DOT-maintained urban principal arterial highway. Access is right-in, right-out with an existing U-turn for northbound movement approximately 1,800 feet to the south. Developer, again, is proposing the voluntary addition of a right turn lane extending south to the entrance of Glen Arthur Drive, which would be subject to DOT requirements and Proposed development would generate under 50 a.m. and p.m. peak hour trips. The estimated traffic generated from the site is under the 100 peak hour threshold that triggers the ordinance requirements for traffic impact analysis. Project is located along Carolina Beach Road, which is currently nearing capacity north of the entrance to the Lord's Creek Community and between those two U-turn movements. Currently, there are no state transportation improvement or STIP projects in the immediate area to address current conditions. Several other projects are underway or under review in the general area, and while their TIAs did not include this specific project, all were developed to address general traffic growth in the area. Based on the general, current general student generation rate, the potential increase would result in approximately 10 additional students that would be generated under the current zoning. This generation rate is updated on an annual basis, using actual student numbers provided by the school system, and provides a countywide picture of the number of students each new residential unit is likely to yield, taking into account that most new residential units in the county do not provide homes for large numbers of school-aged children. Due to the size of the site, proximity, and access to Carolina Beach Road, this property is less likely to be, to be developed with lower-density attached single-family housing. At 14 dwelling units per acre, the proposed maximum density is within the density recommendation for the place type. Site features such as landscaping, parking, and stormwater at the boundaries of the project provide buffers between it and existing residential uses. And the applicant has also provided an additional condition of 10% of the units be dedicated for workforce housing for a minimum of 15 years. The comprehensive plan, again, designates the property as community mixed-use, which is intended to promote a mix of retail, office, and residential development at moderate densities, up to 15 units per acre, and a building height range of one to three stories. The RMFM district is intended to act as a transitional district between residential and commercial development, and the proposed project would provide that buffer between the highway and single-family development. Based on the policy guidance of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review, and the recommended uses and residential density for the community mixed-use place type, staff finds the proposed use to be generally consistent with the comprehensive plan and reasonable and in the public interest because the site design and additional conditions assist in mitigating potential impacts to adjacent land uses and access to that transition between the highway and lower-density residential to the west. As a result, staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions related to exterior lighting, the addition of a right turn lane, tree protection and fencing, the additional voluntary condition by the applicant to ensure workforce housing of 10% of the units or six total units for a period of 15 years, and restrictions on the height of the western road structures. Staff has received several additional comments and petitions regarding this application, which were provided to you earlier today. Finally, should the rezoning be approved, development of the site would be subject to additional development review through the technical review committee to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes my presentation. Scott James with the WMPO and Tim Low with County Engineering are here, and the applicant is here, has a presentation as well.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Farrell. Any questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing and, and invite the applicant to come up for her presentation. Ms. Wolf.
Thank you very much. I'm Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of the owners of the property. As Robert pointed out, I believe all of you board members are familiar with this proposal for development. The scope of the project has gone through several transformations to address comments, recommendations, and decisions that have been made during the last two years. We continue to strongly believe that there is, as staff has recommended in their case summary, support and justification for approval of the current conditional district rezoning request. Most everything you deal with, as always, is from the comprehensive plan, and it was created to chart the course, to be that guiding document to foster economic development and sustainable stewardship of the county. That's what my client based his decisions on when purchasing and looking towards the possible development of this site. Policies for growth and development encourage safe and affordable housing to be available to every citizen, but those needs, it also needs to include a diversity of housing type because housing preferences are not solely the single-family lot template that has been dominating the suburbs in the past. The tract was designated, has been designated in the place type of higher-density development for a reason. Properties along a busier road corridor are no longer attractive or even appropriate for lower-density, single-family development, and so rezoning this property for a multifamily residential development would be consistent with the concept of transitioning uses, infilling vacant parcels where existing utilities can be readily extended and urban services are available. We continue to hear about the influx of new residents in our county and the deficit of housing opportunities for both owned and rented, both single and multifamily styles. The lack of supply and demand continues to drive costs up. Multifamily resident, rental housing can be a temporary solution that evolves into home buying, or in a lot of cases, simply a housing preference for versatility. A mix of housing types also helps create a broader range of residents to support a vibrant community. These charts show that the southern portion of our county is lopsided by both the older demographic and the lower renter share of housing opportunities. The first go-round for development of this site proposed The first go-round for development of this site proposed a project with much more density, but offered a lot of other positive things. This is what resulted from all of those conversations about massing, about layout, about height. This plan, but that was before its time, obviously. You can see that the footprints here are roughly double that of a common home in the Lord's Creek area as far as the footprint itself. There are a total of sixty-four units around the common area of existing trees with a recreational amenity. The two rear buildings resulted in just two stories, so that we have met that criteria of transitioning from single-story, single-residential to a multifamily, but also keep in mind that there's no parking along the side of the drive aisle adjacent to that rear boundary. The complexes of this size have onsite management during daily hours and then twenty-four-seven contact otherwise. The amenity building would have a small office for the manager, facilities for pool users, and common space for residents. As far as architectural style, my client continues to desire for a Mediterranean design. This is a cross-section to the nearest adjacent residence. I guarantee that some of the trees within the buffer are well over the thirty-foot of height that I'm showing in this scaled example, and yet the view line is still blocked. The building height is a maximum of forty feet, the same height allowance afforded by right to any other residential structure in the county. The rear setback prescribed by the ordinance is just thirty feet, but this design provides a ma- minimum of seventy-three feet from those adjacent property lines to the closest building. We internalized the buildings and encircled the parking intentionally to provide that excess setback. Again, the parking is single-loaded along that boundary to provide extra distance between the required buffer and the parked vehicles. The tree symbols shown in this exhibit are the actual regulated trees that were identified on the field survey. Rather than place a solid screening fence along the property line, which generally ends up disturbing the trees that are already there, one of the provisions provided as a condition would be that prior to the onset of clearing and grading, there would be no disturbance of that boundary, and then at completion of construction, the eight-foot-high solid screening fence would be installed at a five-foot offset from that pavement edge, providing the full fifteen-foot of buffer yard plus additional. Access to the complex is directly to and from Carolina Beach Road. This project is not sitting in the center of a development or even flanked by development. It is directly on a major thoroughfare. A right-turn lane would be added that would be extended all the way down to Glen Arthur, which currently has a taper in their own turn lane. The trip generation between the different housing products shows that the increase during peak hours is negligible when comparing it to the volume of traffic on this major roadway, and that, albeit it's dwindling, the capacity of the road is there in this location. Drainage and stormwater management are very straightforward for this project. We have set aside more than adequate area for a detention pond. We have excellent grade across the site, and the pond is obviously located at the low side of the tract. The existing stream that carries drainage from under Carolina Beach Road will continue to traverse the off-site flow past the site and provides for the mandatory flow, pond overflow. A public drainage easement will be dedicated. The wetlands along the stream bordering the southeast boundary of the tract have been delineated, reviewed, and approved by the Corps of Engineers. The plan provides both for the state stream buffer and the county conservation overlay setback from those wetlands. We are well upstream of the closest one-hundred-year flood limit. In conclusion, every home in our community is built in someone's backyard. Opposition to change always asks, why can't you just develop the land as zoned? And New Hanover County is certainly not a stagnant community. This property was zoned for low-density residential in nineteen sixty-nine when zoning was adopted. Conditions change, that's why we update our future plans on a regular basis. The compelling reason for any zoning change is its consistency with both the plans and policies developed by the county for the county as a whole. Conditional zoning districts allow each project to be weighed on its merits and whether mitigation is provided for potential impacts. In this particular case, our proposal addresses those criteria already presented earlier this evening by staff in recommendation for update of the comp plan. We have access. We have transition. We have proximity to services. And as just set aside, we're not greater than the density that would be in a multifamily district. It is at fourteen units per acre, and we're still setting aside the six affordable housing components, just because he believes that that is the right thing to do. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do believe that this project is consistent, and we appreciate the staff's recommendation of such.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wolf. I've got some questions, but I'll let some of the other board members go first. All right, I've got a couple of questions. We do obviously recognize this. Can you tell us some of the, any of the, I guess really, explain to us what the reasoning for denial at the commissioner level was and how you are anticipating overcoming that on this round?
I guess my gut reaction would be, if the vote was three to two, when queried of the opposition, I was told that the three-story gave heartburn. I frankly don't believe that they realized or actually understood that the two rear buildings had been reduced so that we provided that transition that is typical.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And then I guess I just have a couple of just random kind of technical questions. One, you used the term "stream" on that adjacent. Is that a regu- is that a stream?
I believe that is a blue line at that point, yes.
Do you have the required setback from those?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then the last one, we received, obviously, as you know, a lot of public comment. One of the ones was, some of the plans show a dumpster behind some of the residential, some of the plans do not. Would you speak to that, please?
This plan does not show the dumpster pads at this point. Certainly, there's an area up there. I mean, we can work with that in the TRC situation.
But understanding, keeping it away from the residential would be a priority.
Yes.
Okay, all right. What other board questions before we? All right. Thank you very much for your time, Ms. Wolf, and now we're going to open this up to opposition. I will say we have twelve people signed up, as well as having received a lot of emails on this. So I would ask, if someone before you had said something, you can, of course, notate that, but maybe don't dwell on the same item in case someone behind you has a different item that, or different topic they would like to bring up. We have fifteen minutes. If we don't get to everybody, we do have a rebuttal period, and I'll grab his, we'll grab, we'll try to grab everybody. We appreciate everyone coming out this evening, and definitely want to hear from everyone. If I mispronounce a name, I apologize, and I'll just run through in order. The first one is Mr. Frank Stanton. If you would please approach the podium and tell us your name and address.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you very much for giving me time to speak. Just to frame this, I've moved here from Manhattan, which is a concrete jungle, to be in the suburbs. I wanted to be with my family. My son is in, currently in military, and my granddaughters are there. My two concerns at this time is, A, the actual Carolina Beach Road, where you exit and enter that area, that's a fifty-five mile-an-hour speed limit, and we see that it's definitely should be a traffic issue. Anybody who wants to go into town is going to have to come out, go south on Carolina Beach Road, make a U-turn, and then go north. Anybody who wants to use River Road would have to come in Glen Arthur, through that neighborhood, through the Wood Lake neighborhood, and through Ocean Forest Lake to River Road. Also, I'm currently a member of the Wood Lake HOA, which is approximately two-hundred-and-seventy single-family homes, just like Lord's Creek is single-family homes, and also Ocean Forest Lake. And we feel that this, everyone that purchased homes in this area with their families, all right, it's a family environment, single-family homes, and we feel that this project would not be suitable for that area. The other comment I wanted to make, there's many projects going on all around this area, rental units for working-class people, not only on River Road, but also off Carolina Beach Road, and I have not done any statistical study on the amount of demand and things of that nature. I'm not aware that there was a traffic study done, because I think this project didn't require that because of the size of the project. But I, again, I bring that to your attention, and maybe you could talk to your traffic engineer and see what they say. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Next person, Mr. Groner.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is Jonathan Groner. I'm a resident of, it was Okeechobee Road in Ocean Forest Lakes. I'm just going to basically, not going to echo and say the same things, but I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the traffic on Carolina Beach Road, especially with beach traffic going to Carolina Beach itself. I know that it wasn't required to have a study necessarily due to density, but did it take into account all that traffic we get, especially in the summertime? That U-turn issue is an issue to me as well. I think it's the wrong community for that area and that zoning, and that's, I just want to show my opposition to that plan, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Nemoy.
Hello, Ben Namiet. I live also in Ocean Forest Lakes on Champlain Drive, seventy-four oh eight Champlain Drive. The traffic, like I thought a lot of people already said, is a big concern for me, but if you've ever had to make a U-turn out of there every single day, I work in Carolina Beach half the days of the week, and all around town other days of the week. I drive my kids' Island Montessori school, pulling out of that neighborhood, and then having to do the U-turn, especially when combined with the traffic going to the school complex at Ashley and Anderson, and all the schools in there, it is just overwhelming, especially at peak hours. And I heard mentioned, you know, yeah, it's going to be with, you know, it's going to be an increase that, but it's going to be marginal, it's going to be marginal, it's going to be marginal. It just seems like all those little marginal things, you know, they add up. So adding a complex of this size into an area like that just feels like it is going to seriously damage the traffic pattern there, and I just, from someone who lives it every single day and sees it. And another thing that concerns me is that turn into that neighborhood, the amount of people already pulling off the side of the road there, trying to pull off into those places that don't really have a driveway, there's a little church there. I've seen so many near-miss accidents and so many accidents happening there, happen there, just from people pulling off there because it is a fifty-five mile-an-hour speed limit road. It just doesn't really make sense to me, I guess. And if you looked at the length of the turn lane, it looked really short to me, the proposed turn lane, but the other concern I have, of course, is, they showed some site pictures where people standing, I actually know one of the people who lives in the house directly behind that, and I've seen the trees back there, and I just imagine standing in his backyard, and you're looking through, and they had these, you know, pretty trees blocking it in the pictures, but it's not going to block it, it's just not. I mean, realistically, unless you walked maybe right up to the eight-foot fence and then tried to look at a specific angle, but if you were standing on his back porch, it's not going to block anything. I just feel that that area was zoned that way, I know, a long time ago, but a lot of us who bought in that area like the way that it's zoned. We like the way that the neighborhoods are, and I understand the increased need for maybe high-density housing to accommodate people. However, we've seen that in other areas on River Road, and it's caused a massive impact on River Road. Since I've been living here eight years and have seen a massive impact on River Road, just from the addition of those developments. So, like the guy before me said, I just appreciate the opportunity to come up here and speak. I think you guys know that a lot of people are really unhappy with the idea of this being added here. I'm sure it's not lost on you, but I do appreciate your time and thanks for your attention, too. You guys have a good night.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wisner.
Thank you to the board for allowing me to speak this evening. I hate to bring up the same subject that everybody else has been, but I was asked to talk about the traffic issue and concerns there. I speak to you this evening and give you information based upon research, knowledge, and experience that I have as being a first responder in emergency management, and then also being in emergency management, understanding the fact that in both realms, traffic is a critical element that has to be dealt with on a regular basis. So, let me give you some statistics to start out with, be able to look at this. Staff already this evening has said that four-twenty-one is a highly congested roadway. And then with a development that's coming into play here, adding at least, at least a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-fifty vehicles or more by the people who are living there, that also creates a problem. In 2021, in a report that I downloaded off of the internet from Department of Transportation, Sanders Road at that intersection on four-twenty-one was forty-five thousand cars. Can't tell you whether it's one day, a week, five days, whatever it is, because there was no explanation. At Mason, Masonboro Loop, which is just past our development, is, was thirty-five thousand five hundred, okay? There's a little bit of variance there. The other thing that I looked is I found that there was another report on their website that at Golden Road and four-twenty-one, on October the tenth, two-thousand-seventeen, there were thirteen thousand five hundred and forty-seven cars went through that intersection from six AM to seven PM. Wonder what the data, what the data would look like today. Unfortunately, I didn't have enough time to do a traffic ser- sit out there and count cars before coming to this meeting, or else I'd have given you an actual what today was. But that's immaterial at this point. Basically, the last plant, the last meetings that we have been to, we've gotten no real reports or indication of what's being planned to alleviate some of the traffic problems that even this development is going to impact us and even the rest of four-twenty-one. We have not received anything. In fact, the data I just gave you was the first data that I've seen since this whole project was presented to us regarding the traffic. This, the program as it was, the plans that we had seen showed an acceleration-deacceleration land, whereas someone coming out of that new development would be trying to speed up in order to merge over into traffic, while our homeowners are trying to deceler- decelerate in order to be able to make the turn into our development. That can be a problem, because I have seen it over years where that taking place, the people who are accelerating, or supposed to be accelerating, don't really accelerate. They don't know what they're supposed to do, or they forget that they have to speed up in order to merge into traffic. That creates a problem. I've seen many accidents, particularly rear-end collisions, which have caused injury as well as damage. This also can be a real problem with one entrance into this development. I look at it as emergency response, as a fire chief one time a day go, I would see this as a big flag, because if the, if the entranceway got choked up, no more applicants could get in. No more help can come. People who are injured can't get out, as well as people who are evacuating during a disaster, they couldn't get out, because everybody's going to be going at the same time. I think these are traffic concerns that need to be identified that are on top of what we have to deal with. The churches on both sides of our development have high volume of traffic on weekends and even during the week at times, and those are real problems, as the previous speakers have indicated, that comes into play. We at Lord's Creek, in my opinion, we have a deficiency already at our entrance, because we don't have an acceleration lane. We stop at a stop sign, we have to go from zero to fifty-five in a matter of ten seconds, sometimes. That's unsafe. That's where accidents occur and people lose their lives. Thank you for my presentation, for hearing me out.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Ms. Bartley, Pamela Bartley.
Hi. Thank you for hearing me. Yeah, I'm concerned about this apartment complex being built at the entrance of Lord's Creek, which is, I bought recently, a few years back, and we bought it because it was a residential, single-family residential area. There's a drainage easement through my property, which when there are storms such as the heavy rainfall, it just, it's a big mess going through my backyard that I can't do anything with because it's- anything with because it's an easement, but it's on my property. And I feel like having an apartment complex over there and not knowing whether proper infrastructure is done, because Wilmington has a bad habit of not, of building before infrastructure. I've lived here all my life and I've seen this grow into a horrible town. It used to be a great, small-town atmosphere here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dean Stubbs.
Thank you. I'm Tommy Dean Stubbs, live on Glen Arthur. There's two neighborhoods that are already behind us that try to get out, all get out of the same entrance and exit there. You're gonna add another to it with 60-something developed areas, you're gonna create a danger zone. It's already scary to try to get out of there. I, I don't see how you can justify that small area complicating things any more than they already are, and I don't wanna take up time, somebody else probably got something better than I got to say. But you're gonna have a safety issue that you're not gonna be able to do anything with if you let this go in there. It's not big enough for it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. Sheila Stubbs, would you like to speak? Okay. Beth Bergen.
Beth Bergen, 821 Glen Arthur Drive. And I spoke last year, too, and it's the same sort of argument you've heard at all so far, that I wanna also make a point that there's 750 homes that are combined in the three neighborhoods that are just directly south of this development that's being proposed. And it's not, I mean, I want this to come to some yimby instead of a nimby because we are just really at an impasse with these developments, but it's disconnected currently, and I know that there's a bike pedestrian path that's proposed, but I'm just curious when that would be even online? Because these multifamily developments seem to be put out in the middle of nowhere where they have to use cars, they have to get, to get anywhere, they have to get in their car and go somewhere. So it's actually creating the problem, cars are creating the problem. I mean, I would love it if we all had pedestrian paths in our backyard. I mean, it'd be great, but we don't, especially down south. And so, I'm just curious how long, I know it said it was expedited on that amendment, the comprehensive plan, but I, when would we even be expecting to see something like that happen? Because I see the other paths that are taking a long time, and money's not going towards it fast enough, in my opinion. But, so yeah, and as I look at that comprehensive plan, that's the amendments to it, I was actually encouraged thinking, okay, all of these amendments and the revisions actually kinda tell us, say, this might not be the best place for it because it is disconnected from the community centers where we buy our food, we groceries, all of the schools, it can't get to direct access to any of it. So, I mean, I think it's a great plan for Monkey Junction or somewhere that's closer and that's gonna have a sidewalk sooner. So I think that's a big consideration. I would love it to have bike paths all the way down. I'm excited about that piece of it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jerome Wilmarine.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Jerome Wilmarine, 707 Bancroft Drive. Got minimal time, I'll make it short and sweet.
You're okay.
Just a fact, I was out collecting signatures on a petition against this development. 100%, virtually everyone who answered the door signed it. When we went out at an intersection near my house, I had people waiting in line, two or three cars, people were having to go around so that they could sign it. People turned around and drove around a block, pulled around people's driveways and backed up to sign it. People on their way back after dropping their kids off from school said, I had to get my kids to school, they came back and signed it. Everybody is very much against, everybody that I've met, virtually everyone, is very much against this. They're very strong feelings, and this is, I'm sorry, I'm not used to public speaking. There's very, very strong feelings about this. To say politely, it's heck no from everyone. They're concerned about the traffic, they're concerned about the flooding, they're concerned about the infrastructure. I understand, I'm an American, we are into, we do capitalism. You have investors, you make buildings, you make money. But this is the wrong thing, this is the wrong development at the wrong place. It needs to go somewhere else. I mean, I have nothing personal against any of the people, it's just, it doesn't fit. Several other things. We are concerned about natural drainage, and they're talking a record hurricane season coming up. Trees absorb and attenuate massive amounts of water. That site they showed is currently all trees. You clear that off, you've just, that's the first punch against drainage. Then you're gonna put down concrete and just grass, which doesn't absorb much of anything, and in big footprint buildings, it's gonna flood, and it's gonna flood, and it's gonna flood. And what are you gonna tell all the property owners there on Glen Arthur? Oh, sorry, you're just gonna have to gut rehab your house. No, that's not right. So, again, I understand people wanna build things, I understand we need housing. This is the wrong development at the wrong place. There's too many problems. I could go on also. I'm a former paramedic, city of St. Louis, I am used to seeing a lot of accidents. As soon as they proposed that mixed-use acceleration/deceleration lane, Edwards just waved red flags all over the place for me. I thought, what are they gonna do? Have an ambulance and a wrecker station there? It's gonna be a mess. It's already a mess getting out of there. Gentlemen, thank you for your time. If I, if it's allowable, if I could make one small comment to Ms. Cindy. I understand you have a job to do. I have nothing against you personally, I don't know you, but perhaps you could go back to your people and say, again, this is the wrong thing at the wrong place. Maybe they could develop it, single-family like it's currently zoned for.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. You can, you can address us, but appreciate that.
Thank you, gentlemen. That concludes.
And we have three more people signed up to speak in opposition. We will grab them in the rebuttal period. But at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to the applicant for a five-minute rebuttal period. Ms. Wolf.
We can all agree, and I certainly acknowledge, that the entire length of Carolina Beach Road between Sanders Road and Myrtle Grove Road should be reduced and enforced to 45 miles an hour. That's not under our control. Traffic is always a subject of contention, but ultimately, NC DOT is the controlling and permitting agency. Their preliminary review raised no overt issues to this plan, but did recommend the extension of the turn lane, which we have room to extend and provide the taper. They've referenced a complex of this size. There are 64 units, that's a relatively small complex in, in our community to provide extra housing in a different type of housing product. The proposed, the triangle of land at the entry into Lord's Creek is not part of this proposal, so aesthetically, aesthetics-wise, when you're turning into Lord's Creek, this project doesn't have an impact on that. It's no different than anything along Carolina Beach Road, up and down the road, that you would see passing by on a major highway. Everyone in those 800 homes also needs to get into their vehicles to get everywhere that they're going to go. Projects like this are the types of projects that if this board wanted to add a condition that sidewalks be placed along the frontage, sure, there are sidewalks from nowhere to nowhere, but it's a start. I believe firmly that the county should have been enforcing sidewalks for years for any project, in addition to just the residential, which they do. But it does seem a little ingenuous to say, oh, these people are going to have to get in their cars to go everywhere. Every one of those 800 homes does also. We don't believe, I mean, I guess that there are reasonably 12 adjacent property owners, adjacent to the project immediately, that have some feasible points of opposition. But I believe through the buffering, through the setbacks, through the conditions for lighting, all of those things, we have addressed as best we can mitigating the impacts of immediately adjacent property owners. 800 people that are as much as a half-mile away from this project, I don't, I can't justify that because they signed a petition, they really have a standing in this decision. But we appreciate your time. Again, I'd be happy to answer questions. We do believe in the consistency of this project in its location.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wolf. I think we'll do questions after. Let's go back to the opposition. Have three more people signed up, order. Ms. Nancy Steele.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak at the end here. I'm Nancy Steele. I live at 816 Mackey Court, or McKay Court, and I am very close, I am directly impacted by this development. But I don't wanna talk about the traffic, and I don't wanna talk about, you know, visual issues. I have bigger picture issues I'd like to bring up to give you different points of view. And one of the things is that land is a finite resource, and that's why you have zoning decisions to make. So we have to allocate that judiciously. And with the amount of apartments that are being built in Wilmington and in this immediate area, we don't need any more apartments. And I do take issue with the point she was making about that lower-density housing would not be feasible in this area directly adjacent to Carolina Beach Road, because we have a development of townhouses, it's not high-density, it was just built a couple of years ago, only a few hundred feet south of this location next to the Catholic Church. And they've, they've sold all of those immediately. So that's not true. You can, they are directly on Carolina Beach Road, so that is possible. I think we should be developing more houses for sale, for people who want to relocate to Wilmington and live here and invest in the community, to be longstanding members of the community, to own their homes. And as far as the high cost of, you know, housing, I mean, we have an abundance of apartments, and that's not bringing down the cost of housing. So, you know, I'm not sure that's the solution. I surveyed and went out to different apartment complexes right in that immediate area, and there are lots of vacancies. You can get an apartment very quickly and sign a lease and move in. So there's not a shortage of apartments in that vicinity. And also workforce housing, I think they went through, I know that's a big buzzword and that you like that, but I'm not too sure about that. Because he, he went through those slides so very quickly, you could not see the details. And my fear is that this is like a new government bureaucracy where you're gonna regulate rental properties in the community. I just don't think we need that. We, we don't need our government to be in that involved in regulating the price of housing. I don't think it's good. So those are my comments. I hope you'll consider them, I hope you will consider traffic issues and just build something else there. It's not not in my backyard, it's, can there be something else in my backyard?
All right. Thank you very much. Jess Anderson.
Hi. I'm Jess Anderson, 6928 Ontario Road. I'm in the Woodlake community, and I sit on the board and represent most of our neighborhood in opposition of this development. Most of the points have been made. My main point is the safety concern of our deceleration lane becoming an acceleration lane. You think about that, we need all that lane to decelerate from that 55 mile an hour. Even if you change the speed limit down to 45 miles an hour, people aren't gonna obey that. We're still looking at 55, 65 miles per hour, and we're having to decelerate. You add in this other neighborhood, they are then accelerating into our deceleration, or even when we're coming off of Carolina Beach Road, decelerating. What if they're turning in before us and we still need the rest of that lane to keep on going? There's gonna be major safety concerns, so I just truly hope you guys will consider that, maybe even another traffic study as well. There's also a church there, I sent you guys some pictures, I know it's hard to see, but if you line them all up, you'll see the traffic that comes with that church. The church is doing a good service, you know, providing a food pantry every single week, and it gets chaotic. You add that deceleration lane or their acceleration lane in, it's gonna go all the way back to the church, and it's gonna take up part of their parking where these cars are currently parking. Then they're gonna be parking in the median or somewhere else crossing Carolina Beach Road, creating more safety concerns. So I hope you guys will all consider that.
All right. Thank you very much. And then we have John, I believe it's DuVant.
Durant.
Durant, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Durant. I live at 509 Superior in Ocean Forest Lakes. My concerns echo many of my neighbors. I would also vehemently disagree with Ms. Wolf, that I believe every residence of those three neighborhoods has a vested interest in whether or not this development is approved or not. My specific concerns are, again, the same as everybody else, traffic. As the father of a 15-year-old with, recently got his permit, egressing our neighborhood onto Carolina Beach Avenue South, whether to go to the beach or to do the U-turn, is dangerous at best right now. If you add another ingress/egress 100 meters to the north, you're compounding that problem. My second issue with extending, with this project is, in extending that acceleration/deceleration or turn lane south to Glen Arthur, absolutely guarantees that every single person that lives and has a vehicle in that will be coming through our neighborhoods to get to Carolina Beach Road to go north on weekends when beach traffic is heavy and as development continues to grow. All of the roads in our neighborhoods are private roads. So it absolutely guarantees it. As it is now on many weekends, it's very difficult to get out of our subdivision. You consistently see traffic backing up. When the Catholic Church to the south of us lets out, traffic will stop, it will back up. Anyone coming out of that apartment complex is gonna be coming into our neighborhood. Our neighborhood are private roads. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and open it up for board discussion. In fact, I think, I would like to actually invite Mr. James from the MPO up, if he doesn't mind, to speak a bit about your role in that area, some of the capacities of the road, and also if you could speak about some of the concerns, the mixing of the decel and acceleration lane, and just weigh in on that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't know I had the choice to weigh in or not. I think I'm compelled now to respond. First, I would like to say it is a DOT facility. So the WMPO, because there is no formal traffic study, we do not have a formal role in the review. It's a driveway permit application that's exclusive to the DOT. As Ms. Wolf mentioned, they have their own evaluation on how to permit and what to require for access to the roadway. And what is now being agreed to, or at least proposed and agreed to, is a combination deceleration lane for vehicles accessing this property, and then the acceleration lane for vehicles egressing this property. What has been mentioned by the concerned citizens is what we would call a weaving maneuver, which is when you have two vehicles using the same facility for different purposes. One's entering a site and one's exiting a site, and that maneuver is called the weaving maneuver. They are correct. They are correct. If it occurs at the same time and the people who are entering the facility do not yield, you can have a conflict. But our understanding from the design point of view is the vehicle in the road has the right of way, and the vehicle entering that lane is to yield. So the concerns raised are ones of driver adherence to the rules.
And it is a, it is a configuration which you have approved and permitted in the past?
Yes. The NC DOT has several such continuous turn lanes with multiple driveways in the New Hanover County and Wilmington area. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other board questions for Mr. James while he's up here?
Chair. To the question regarding speed limits. Who set speed limits along Carolina Beach Road? DOT or is that local?
That is a DOT facility, so they control the speeds. I understand that the local jurisdiction can request a speed survey if there are concerns they're bringing to the DOT interest, and then they will conduct a speed study to see if the speeds should be adjusted, the posted speed limits. But it's a DOT facility, they control the speed limit.
What are the criteria that they would utilize to determine a reduction in speed? Would it be access, or would it be amount of traffic, number of curb cuts?
That is an area in which I really should not exercise my engineering judgment because I am not the engineer responsible for the roadway. It is not a simple calculation. There are several factors that can be taken into account, one of which can be the adjacent land use. The most obvious example I can provide is the school zone. The facility has a posted speed limit, but adjacent to the school, that speed limit is reduced. That is in response to the adjacent land use.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. James while he's, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Sir, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Mr. Matthews.
I do want to make sure I have this in my head. So you're saying it's incumbent on whoever is entering that lane to yield to the people who are exiting on the lane in the weaving maneuver?
Yes, sir. I think it's, I will try to explain it in terms of right of way. If you are on the facility, you have the right of way.
So exiting this property, you would have the right of way? You would not have the right?
The opposite, sir. If you are on Carolina Beach Road, you have the right of way.
Okay.
If you are entering Carolina Beach Road, you are at the yield condition. You should wait until it is clear. If you are a novice driver, you should wait until it is very clear.
Gotcha. And that was very clear. Thank you. So you're saying the weaving actually takes place within the decel lane, or the now decel/accel lane?
Yes, sir. I don't know if there, yes, there are a couple of local examples. The cloverleaf design exiting a freeway, where you exit the freeway and then you pass beneath the road you left to get to the road that goes beneath. There's a moment where the lane that you were on overlaps the entrance for another vehicle to access the road you just departed. So the cloverleaf kind of has an overlap maneuver. That is a classic weave, where you are on the same part of the road that takes you from one road to the other, and another vehicle is on that road taking it from the road you're accessing to the one you left. So you're overlapping each other's path. That is the weave. We try to avoid that, but it can occur.
Okay. And you said there are other places in New Hanover County where there are decel lanes with multiple access points?
I thought of it while anticipating the question on College Road approaching the commercial district north of the university campus. There's a long continuous right turn lane in the northbound direction. Several commercial driveways enter that right turn lane. That is the weave maneuver that I was describing. There are vehicles that would have to wait until that right turn lane were clear before they could enter northbound College Road.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your expertise on that. What other, I'd like to open up to other board discussion and thoughts on this. Mr. Avery.
I am still live over here. Trying to figure out what was our vote on this property when it came to us the first time? Was it a unanimous vote? What was the actual number? Can somebody tell me that?
Seven to oh in favor.
Seven oh? Thank you.
That's my recollection.
Well, traffic is a frustrating thing for everybody in this county. I live off South College Road. I have some similar problems getting in and out of there. I've always said that you can't build enough roads in this county or anywhere in this world to accommodate all the cars that want to be on those roads. LA is a good example of their freeway bogging down. And that's happening here. It's happening on South College Road, happens on Oleander Drive, happens on downtown streets. It's everywhere. But until we break the cycle of not wanting to drive a personal car by ourselves, we're going to have traffic problems till the day we die. Everybody wants to drive a car, and ain't enough room out there for everybody all the time. And it creates congestion, slows things down, it's very inefficient, but there's no cure for that. I'm not sure what the cure is. We were not shutting the door on development just because we have traffic congestion. Most cities that I've been in recently, Greenville, North Carolina, for example, is worn out with, I'm sorry, is worn out with cars, cars and cars. Every, every major thoroughfare takes you forty-five minutes to an hour sometimes to go one spot to another. I lived there a long time ago, and, you know, but that was a long time ago. There weren't as many cars on the road so I could get from point A to point B pretty quickly. Not anymore. It's just the nature of the beast. I don't have a cure for it. I just know that until we come up with better modes of transportation to move people around to services that they need, then we're just going to have to deal with congestion. It's there, it's not going away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. What are the board comments? Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I think this is the third time we've considered a multifamily project on this, this property. The first time, it was a large, larger building, four stories, single monolithic structure that, to me, seemed out of place on that corridor. I wasn't comfortable, was not in favor of it. Last time, it was much like this. Buildings were smaller. They weren't one large, four-story building. They were like this. It's three stories stacked toward Carolina Beach Road, two-story building phasing down toward the single family. You've got, you've got trees that are going to remain, you've got a tall fence. I noticed that, as Wolf pointed out, along the rear, it's a single line for parking. The only double stack parking is, is to the north and over there along Carolina Beach Road. Everybody's been so patient, who has been in opposition to it. Come down here several times, everybody's been extremely civil, and you've got some great points. You really do. I've had, family members of mine have been in three rear-end collisions in New Hanover County in the last year. I get it. It's, it's a concern. But these, this is what DOT recommends, and they, they must see more good than bad from it. Another way to look at it is people who are either renting because they're just arriving to the area and they haven't figured out where they want to live, or somebody who's, who's out there in the workforce and is earning, let's say it's a single person, and their household income is under fifty thousand dollars a year. They're working as hard as they can, but fifty thousand dollars a year really won't even get you a fifteen hundred dollar a month apartment. There's got to be a place for everybody. And when you think where you're going to put multifamily, where are you going to put It's gonna, it's, it needs to be along a major traffic corridor, and that's what this does provide. And I understand that some people are going to go through Lord's Creek, which is a very nice, very nice neighborhood. But I think most of them are going to stay on the Carolina Beach corridor simply because it's the shortest distance between two points. It's, this is one of those things that's, is just really tough because I know you're passionate, and you raise some excellent points, but we've got to have multifamily someplace, and the folks have come back and modified their, their site plan. This is the third time. I don't see how they could be any more accommodating than, than they are. And fourteen units an acre is, is at the lower end of medium density. High density is, is more like eighteen, twenty, twenty-five units an acre. This is not a high-density project. Sixty-four units is, it's on the smallest scale of an apartment complex, and that's why I'm going to vote to support it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll echo Mr. Matthews' comments. I do believe that, that this, as presented, addresses, tries to address some of the concerns that we, we have, a budding, a higher density to a lower density. They reduced the, the, the two buildings to the west from three stories to two. They have separated these buildings significantly from the property line. They've, they've included a fence, a solid fence. These are all good things. I do have two other things that I think would help with, with my deliberations, and I think help address some of the concerns that the community have. And I think, I feel like I need to ask these of the applicant because I, if a motion is made, I would like to add these as conditions.
Well, then.
Can we ask the applicant?
Well, let's discuss them.
Discuss them first? The two, the two I would, one is to make a request that they include the twenty-foot public access easement along Carolina Beach Road. I did not see that in the, it's in there?
Yeah, number six on the conditions.
All right. I looked on my, I did not see that. So that's good. The other would be to push, to assure that any dumpsters were to the north or to the east of the, of the site development. So I guess since the access easement is, is a part of it, the only other condition I would recommend that we ask the applicant is if they would assure that the dumpsters will be located to the north or to the east portions of the property.
Ms. Wolf?
Yes, and I apologize that I just didn't put dumpster locations on this particular plan. That was just my lapse. But yes, we would certainly understand that, that to the north or to the east. But obviously, anywhere in visibility of the road, they would be fenced in enclosures.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Thank you, Mr. Hymn. Mr. Tarrant.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to repeat what's already been said as far as my fellow board members and their analysis of the site plan. I agree with what's already been mentioned. I think it's a strong site plan. I think the applicant's done a good job of addressing the concerns that have been expressed to them throughout their multiple trips before this board and their communications with commissioners as well as the residents. So, that being said, I do think that we all understand and appreciate the fact that this location on Carolina Beach Road is problematic, and that every project that we get, and we do get quite a few, as you are all aware, in that location tend to bring out the same concerns, the same worries of the residents. And I can tell you as a board member who's been here and has considered those, I struggle every single time because we drive that road, we know folks who live there, we lived there ourselves. Mr. Avery has stated, we experience the same, same concerns and the same frustrations that you have. But as board members, we're tasked with analyzing the application before us and dealing with what we can deal with. And if we had the ability to solve that problem on Carolina Beach Road, solve that problem on Market Street, solve that problem on Oleander Drive, believe you, me, we would do it. But we don't know how to do it, and there's obviously people much smarter than us who haven't quite figured it out as well. It's something that we all have to, have to deal with. I completely understand the point that was made, which I thought was a good one, about the fact that, you know, we're building, putting residences in there. This particular application is for multifamily, and we don't have the services. So we're actually putting more cars on the road instead of providing the services. I think it's a great point. But unfortunately, the way it works is that in order to get those services, you've got to have those residences there, right? So the businesses are going to follow where the people are. So it's a chicken or the egg type of thing. I'm not saying I agree with it, I'm not saying it makes sense. I'm just saying that's kind of how it is. So if we want the services there, if we want to make sure that we get folks off the road, we've got to put them on the road first. Again, these are the problems and the issues that we struggle with as a board. And I say that because I want folks to understand and know that we don't take any of this lightly. I mean, we're, we're not out here to just rubber stamp everything that comes across, you know, the podium to us. We want to make the best decision we can. We've got a responsibility and duty to analyze these things based upon the UDO, based upon the criteria that's set out before us legally, and we want to do good by our friends and neighbors. So we're trying to do the best we can. I just want to know, I want you to know that you're heard. Trust me, you are, and we're going to do the best we can for you, but we do understand your frustrations, and we do share them a lot of times.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Tarrant. Any other discussion at this point? All right. Before we proceed with a motion and vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition, request a continuance, or proceed with a vote?
We'd like to proceed, please.
Thank you very much. Entertain a motion or any further discussion if warranted.
All right, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Mr. Tarrant.
This is a long one, so bear with me here. So I'll move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be generally consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the development scale and density is in line with the plan's recommendation for the place type, and the project would provide additional housing diversity in the area. I find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides an alternative housing type that acts as a buffer for lower-density residential, contributing to the kind of transitional development desired along highway corridors. An additional voluntary condition by the applicant also ensures workforce housing affordability for ten percent of the units, or six total units, whichever is greater for a period of fifteen years. Proposed conditions. Number one, the exterior lighting, including luminaries and security lights, shall be arranged or shielded so as not to cast illumination in upward direction above an imaginary line extended from the light sources parallel to the ground. Fixtures shall be numbered such that adequate levels of lighting are maintained, but that light spillage and glare are not directed at adjacent property, neighboring areas, or motorists. Light posts shall be no taller than twelve feet. Number two, the proposed right turn lane must be approved and permitted by NC DOT. Changes to the concept plan to meet NC DOT requirements for the turn lane may be approved administratively by county staff. Number three, tree protection fencing shall be installed prior to the onset of land clearing and grading along a minimum fifteen-foot offset from the edge of the outer drive. No disturbance of existing vegetation or grading will be permitted. Prior to the certificate of occupancy, a minimum eight-foot-tall, solid wood screening fence shall be installed along a three-foot offset from the driveway pavement. Number four, the project will include a minimum of ten percent of the units, or six total units, whichever is greater as workforce housing units that will be made available for a period of no less than fifteen years, with rental limits based upon HUD high-income standards. An agreement between the developer and county will be required before the issuance of any certificate of occupancy for the project. The agreement shall specify that the number of affordable units provided, the income limits, rent limits subject to annual change, period of time workforce housing units must remain affordable, any other criteria necessary for compliance and monitoring, establish timeframe for annual reporting from the developer or owner of the development to New Hanover County. Annual reports shall provide the following minimum information: unit number, bedroom number, household size, tenant income, and rent rate. The developer or owner of the development shall report any mid-year lease changes to workforce housing units to New Hanover County. The developer or owner of the development shall report any mid-year lease changes to workforce housing units to New Hanover County to ensure these changes remain compliant with the agreement. If the total number of workforce housing units falls below the minimum of ten percent of the units or six total units, whichever is greater, before the expiration of the minimum fifteen-year period of affordability, the development will be subject to enforcement measures found in Article 12 violations and enforcement of the unified development ordinance. Number five, the project is limited to a maximum of sixty-four units and the two western-west multifamily structures shall be limited to two stories. Number six, a minimum twenty-foot-wide public access easement shall be provided along the front edge parallel with Carolina Beach Road for public bicycle and pedestrian use. And then, Mr. Hip, I think you had one more.
I would say seven, that any dumpster or trash facilities be located on the northern or eastern portions of the property.
I will also include number seven as stated by Mr. Hip. There's my motion.
All right, we have a motion. Wait. Mr. Avery?
Before you call for a second, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
That's possible.
Yes.
This is for staff. Who in the county will be responsible for monitoring the affordable housing covenant that will be created between the developer and the county?
We have a housing program team and this is one of the functions that, when they were first created, was determined that would be responsible for. This is a similar condition that has been added to several projects in the past couple of years since that program has been created.
Is that part of your department?
It is.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Avery. So we have a motion.
Second?
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five-zero. I would like to remind everyone that this item will be going before the county commissioners, scheduled for Monday, July twenty-second. Will be here at four P.M. I appreciate everyone coming out and would ask that if you could file out, anyone that wants to stay certainly can, but we've got other items we need to attend to. So thank you again for coming.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Hip?
May I make a request for a short break?
We, yes, if, yes, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are moving along to item number seven. Let's see. Rzoning map amendment application Z-24-09. Request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions, applicant to rezone approximately a quarter of an acre, zoned R-15 residential, located 802 South Seabreeze Road to CZDCB Community Business for a commercial structure totaling eighteen hundred square feet for the use of general retail sales and/or other limited uses. This, like the other several items, is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff and the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed fifteen minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. This time I'd like to ask for the staff presentation. Mr. Biddle?
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the board. This evening's request is for a conditional rezoning from Residential District R-15 to the Community Business District CB. The proposed rezoning is for a quarter-acre parcel in close proximity of Carolina Beach Road, just north of the Snowscut Bridge. The site is located at 802-
We're gonna go ahead and get this going.
Actually, um, very similar story, uh, when I graduated, I went to military.
All right. Thank you very much. That was a few more than five minutes. Apologize for that. We are moving along to item number seven. Let's see. Res zoning map amendment application Z two four dash zero nine. Request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions applicant to rezone approximately a quarter of an acre zoned R fifteen residential located eight oh two South Seabreeze Road. To CZDCB community business for a commercial structure totaling eighteen hundred square feet. For the use of general retail sales and or other limited uses. This, like the other several items, is a public hearing. We'll hear a presentation from staff. And the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed fifteen minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. This time I'd like to ask for the staff presentation. Mr. Biddle.
Yes, thank you Chair, members of the board. This evening's request is for a conditional rezoning from residential district R fifteen to the community business district CB. The proposed rezoning is for a quarter acre parcel in close proximity of Carolina Beach Road, just north of the Snowscott Bridge. The site is located at eight oh two South Seabreeze Road and was originally zoned R fifteen in nineteen seventy one. At the time, the purpose of the R fifteen district was to ensure that housing on private wells and septic was developed at low densities. Since then, private water and sewer service have become available to the surrounding area through Aqua. Here, the aerial photograph shows that on-site is currently, uh, that the site is currently undeveloped. Located at the corner of South Seabreeze and Service Road. And also is in close proximity to Carolina Beach and South Seabreeze intersection. The parcel is located within the historic Seabreeze neighborhood, which was established in the mid nineteen twenties as a, to serve as a prime vacation resort for African Americans within southeastern North Carolina from the nineteen thirties through the nineteen fifties. Here's the same aerial photograph of the site with images of property from different angles. Here we have examples of development found along South Seabreeze Road and other R fifteen residential neighborhoods. And here we see two examples of the proposed principal land use. The applicant's concept plan details their proposal to conditionally rezone this undeveloped point two five acre lot. The proposal is to develop a two-story, one thousand eight hundred square foot structure for the purposes of establishing a general retail service or other similar land use. The front of which will be facing the parking lots. Though the site has two access points, the only entrance per the applicant will be the service road point of access, which will serve as both an entrance and an exit. The South Seabreeze access point will serve as a one-way exit from the parcel. The applicant has conditioned a six-foot-high privacy fence separating the required vegetated buffer yard and the adjacent residential properties. Regarding stormwater, it should be noted that per county engineering, the proposed six thousand nine hundred square feet of impervious ground cover does not require state stormware, uh, stormwater permitting. As detailed in the concept plan, the subject lot has two access points. Again, one on South Seabreeze, which will serve as an exit only, and the other on Service Road, which will be full access. This image details all the proposed development within the vicinity. You'll note that the Seabreeze Village, which is directly north of the subject lot, i- is, um, is approximately where the, uh, the Pelican Snowball, uh, stand used to operate. The proposed use is expected to generate a traffic increase of an approximate three AM and eleven PM peak hour trips, which is well below the threshold requiring a traffic impact analysis. Regarding the part, the proposal's compatibility, this area was the focus of the Seabreeze Small Area Plan, which was created in nineteen eighty nine. The recommendations for the area included a revitalization of the businesses and a redevelopment of the waterfronts. While much of the surrounding area is low-density residential, there are planned higher-density townhomes to the south and mixed-use commercial to the north. The property's proximity to the Snowscott Bridge along a heavily traveled corridor serves as a location conducive to this type of commercial developments. Comprehensive plan designates this property as being part of the community mixed-use place type, in which commercial uses and is also encouraged in field development. The proposed conditions are a combination of both applicant and staff-led considerations. Before I give the synopsis, I should mention to the board that condition number two has been amended. It's gonna read that, uh, a six-foot-high screening fence in buffer yard will be installed along the adjacent residential lot lines versus what is on there, so. These conditions include limiting the principal uses, installation of privacy fencing within the buffer yard, capping the total amount of impervious ground cover, and exterior lighting considerations. Should the rezoning be approved, development of the site will be subject to additional development review to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions concerning it or the staff reports. Mr. Scott James of the WMPO and Mr. Tim Lowe, county engineer, are here to answer any questions. And Ms. Cindy Wolf, the applicant, is here with a presentation of her own. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Biddle. Any questions for staff at this time? Thank you very much. This time I'd like to open the public hearing and invite Ms. Wolf up for her presentation.
Thank you. I'm Cindy Wolf. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Winter, but with Jerry and Dana Vess, my clients, who have a dream of a family business. And that's where this got started. They've looked up and down Carolina Beach Road and in the general vicinity, and of course, you know, existing commercial properties are extremely expensive. This is sort of a niche kind of idea that they have as far as recreational, um, retail, if you will. And this cornered lot just seemed like the right place at the right time. As Wendell pointed out, we're in the R fifteen district, and so that's why we're here for the rezoning. This is the site plan they have in mind. Um, it's a small building. The footprint, of course, is, what, twelve fifty, but they would have a mezzanine or an, a sort of upper-under-the-roof, uh, additional area for office and storage, and that's why we're going with the eighteen hundred square feet. As far as the circulation pattern, Wendell had asked the question, why was it just the one way? With this type of thing, when we're talking about, you know, bait for fishing, uh, they happen to have, uh, an affinity for archery, and so the hooks and arrows has to do basically with fishing and archery. Is, you would expect that there'd probably be some, uh, vehicles with trailers coming through, and we felt that because of the size of the site, which is extremely small, in perspective, I went ahead and put the recently approved, uh, Seabreeze Village, the big commercial center that, uh, we believe will be developed on this upper corner. So in comparison, this is really the size of a house and, uh, but it's a perfect opportunity to provide the types of goods and materials in the right place in this community. So with that, I really won't belabor it. I think this is a great opportunity for, uh, maintaining small business. It's a nice opportunity for the neighborhood as far as the types of retail that, or other uses if it, uh, transitioned in later years could provide, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Wolf. Did either of the Vess's wish to speak? They're both signed up.
No, not unless there's questions.
Okay. Questions for the applicant now?
All right.
All right, not, not this time. Thank you very much. This time I'd like to open up for, um, people in opposition. We have one person signed up, Hannah Marie Atwood. If you please state your name and address, and you have fifteen minutes.
Hi, um, I'm Hannah Marie Atwood. Um, I'm at thirteen oh eight Deer Hill Drive, but my husband and I own property that's adjacent to this building, and my husband's actually a, um, you know, his ancestors are descendants, he's a descendant of the Seabreeze original communities, and just last Friday, we were able to enjoy the unveiling of the historic marker on the highway for Seabreeze and the community, and it really didn't even encompass the entire, you know, totality of the history of that area. Um, as it was stated already, it is a historic area. Um, it was a historic area that was created for the black community during Jim Crow era, and actually even before then, when the beaches were segregated, so was the area where, um, black people were able to go to the beach, and it was just a community all of its own where there were fishermen and, you know, they did shrimping, and they had, um, you know, they actually had their own little jail on the site, too. They had juke joints, um, concrete layers, brick layers. It was just a self-sufficient community all on its own. Um, my husband is actually one of the few people that, you know, um, he grew up on Seabreeze Road. He was there to be able to see it at the end of his heyday, and even now, how it's changed throughout the years. Um, and we know, you know, change is definitely, I mean, it's something that's always gonna happen. It's like, that's the only thing that's constant, it's changed, but I don't feel, and the other community members that are family don't feel, that this particular business is right fit for our community because with the revitalization, it was really to revitalize the communities or the businesses that used to be there, not for new people to come in, and there's already been enough. I mean, we've got several new residents in the area where, you know, we welcome everyone in, but I would, we would really prefer someone from the historic Seabreeze community to be able to develop an area. If they're gonna switch it from, um, from residential to commercial, we would prefer it to actually be someone from that community than someone from outside. And really, I would rather it just stay residential. I wouldn't mind if a house went there. Like they said, it's eighteen hundred square feet. There's a housing shortage as it is. A house would be more appropriate there. I'm thinking about the trailers coming in and out, potentially, right, I'm literally one, um, piece of property over. One of our piece of properties is one area over from where one of the exits, um, where the exit will be, or one of the exits will be. And then we're already gonna have to deal with the big Seabreeze Village, the gas station, I think it's like a fast food restaurant, and another restaurant. I know it's two restaurants. It looks like one of them might be fast food, um, just because of the way that the site looks, but I'm not entirely sure. And, you know, we weren't really, we weren't really, um, in, we didn't really want that either, but, you know, again, things, things occur. There's gonna be development. I get that. There are townhouses that are going up behind us that I know a lot of people from the community came out to speak in opposition to, and I heard it was ultimately passed. I wasn't able to attend. I think I did. I sent in several, um, questions, um, last year because I couldn't go to that actual meeting, but, um, so we already have however many townhomes going behind us. I think I was, I think it was said that it's supposed to be, um, affordable housing, but I think, I don't know if this is accurate, but I was told that they're gonna, gonna be on sale for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus, so I'm not sure how that's affordable housing, but that's, that's not even the same situation, but, um, yeah, I'm all for business ownership and small business owners. Um, it's nothing against this particular project or these people specifically. It's just, um, it doesn't fit in with the historic community, and so that's why I'm in opposition of the project. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And, um, Ms. Wolf, you have a five-minute rebuttal period if you'd like to use it?
I don't really have a lot to add, other than I think we would agree that this corner of that signalized intersection would not be appropriate for residential. I think that, um, this type of use, too, and the size of it, it's going to be very destination-specific, and it's going to be, I mean, the traffic that would go to it is, I think, also very time, uh, sort of self-controlling. Um, if you're going fishing in the morning and you need bait, you're gonna be going at a different hour than some other people are going, or at the end of the afternoon. Anyway, uh, there really isn't much to rebut what the woman said, but I do believe that this is consistent with the type of thing that is at the entrance of Seabreeze.
All right. Thank you very much. And we actually have a, an additional five minutes, and Ms. Atwood, if you would like to speak again, um, you don't have to. It's just, it's available for you. Okay? Great. Um, well, this time I'd like to close the public hearing and open it up for, for board discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question, please, for staff. On proposed conditions developer, number three. Can somebody explain that to me? Cause it's a little bit fuzzy, and I'm trying to understand why an increase in impervious service, whether it's a building or a driveway, would require a rezoning, and that's what it says, rezoning. Can you explain that?
Yes, sir. So the idea was to cap the proposal at, uh, no greater than thirteen thousand square feet. That would include the ten thousand that is allotted by engineering, plus the one-time three thousand allotment that the county offers. I can't speak to the motivation behind that proposal, but I think the idea is that if we're, if the applicant were to ever want to increase beyond that thirteen thousand, then they were just gonna have to go back through the rezoning process. I'm sorry, did that answer your question?
Would that, would that not, I'm sorry, would that not be just an amendment to the existing plan? Have a, another rezoning, cause they already rezoned it, conditional use, whatever.
So, so Mr. Avery, and I believe Mr. Lowe can speak to this, but I believe if they went over that impervious level, it would require an engineered stormwater facility, which would be beyond what staff could approve administratively.
I, I understand that, but it says it has to go back through rezoning. I don't think that's what it should do.
It would be beyond what staff could approve administratively.
Well, if they go above thirteen thousand square feet, they don't have to do an engineered plan, so they're gonna have to revise the entire site plan. But that doesn't require rezoning, other than unless you consider it an amendment to the existing plan that we might approve right here.
It is. The concept plan is part of the conditional rezoning, so anything beyond what we can approve administratively would have to come back through as a rezoning. Um, Ms., uh, Mr. Lowe, would you like to speak to that?
Well, I, I can't, I can't speak to the-
I know this is s mechanical, but you keep saying rezoning. You're not rezoning it.
It is considered a new zoning district if the concept plan changes beyond what we could administratively approve.
Okay. I, I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I will say I, I can't speak to the zoning piece of it, but for the, yes, if they go over thirteen thousand square feet, they'd have to come to engineering either way for a stormwater permit.
Actually, while you're up there, Mr. Lowe, thank you for, for coming up. Um, is it not ten thousand? What's the extra three thousand? I'm not familiar with that.
So that, that was given back in two thousand when the original ordinance was created. It's intended for these parcels that, like this one, that existed pre-two thousand. It's been there for a while. There could be existing homes on it, existing impervious. It, it's, it's not to become overly burdensome on things that were by right, you know, could have been developed prior to two thousand.
Okay, okay. But this site isn't even thirteen thousand square feet.
Well, that, that's the other thing I would mention. I, I think we're talking about a quarter of an acre, so, I mean, that's more in line with ten thousand square feet anyway, so.
Right. Okay, okay. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What other, what other board questions? Mr. Hip?
I just have a couple of comments, and, um, in general, it's a, it's a, it's a unique site. It's an interesting concept, um, how, how they wanna develop, but I, I, whether it's good or bad design, that's not for us to say. Um, the, but, but there was a comment from Ms. Atwood, um, that I wanna address. This board, uh, and I don't think the commissioners, uh, I won't speak to them, but we, we, we have no real say in who the owner of the property is and what that owner of the property wants to do with their property. That's, that's not our, we, we can't go there. We, we can address the types of uses that the property owner wants to put on the property. In this case, it was, I don't know all of them, general, general busi, general retail sales. That's, that's what we can address. That type, that's as broad of, or as specific as we can get as far as the type of business. And as far as ownership, there, we just don't, we don't have any power over who owns the property and who the applicant is. I just wanna make sure that, 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 that was stated, um, because it, it's, um, it's important to understand what we have the ability to do. That's all.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, I, I actually had some questions for Ms. Wolf, but, but it was based on the layout. But I didn't understand the use fully and, and the extra turn. I, ideally, you, you're not putting your rear of, of the building towards Seabreeze, and hopefully that, that's-
No, we, we would commit to a double-frontage architectural style, absolutely. Um, they've already shown me some examples of what they have in mind, so I hope to have an exhibit for the commissioners to see what both sides would look like.
Perfect. And then I guess the only other question is, since it is two-story and we're so close, um, I know on other sites we've done, and again, not trying to burden this property owner with, but when we're, we are this tight, we have adjacent residential property right next to us, um, is a six-foot sufficient if it's two-story?
This is, the, we've also limited it to twenty-five feet, so.
Okay.
The two-story, like I said, the, the rest of it is up under the roof to a certain extent. Now, they might have a twelve-foot, you know, eve or whatever. But that being said, the property around it is Mr. Freeman's. It's- It's vacant.
Okay, okay.
It is zoned residential, certainly.
So it's really a story and a half when, or-
Roughly, yes.
Okay, I won't say that. Okay, all right. Mr. Hip's good with that than I am. All right. No further questions. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Any other board discussion on this? Well then, Ms. Wolf, anticipating this question. Before we proceed with a motion and vote, would you like, based on the discussion I had presented, would you like to withdraw your petition, request a continuance, or proceed with a vote?
We'd like to proceed, please.
All right, thank you very much. I'll entertain further discussion or a vote, or, I mean, I'm sorry, a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hip.
All right. I move to approve, I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the proposed uses are in line with the recommendations of the community mixed-use place type. I also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the development will act as a community service business node to serve both the Seabreeze community and the surrounding area. The proposed conditions. One, the proposed rezoning principal use should be limited to general retail sales, animal grooming service, general personal services, instructional services and studios, and offices for private business and professional activities. Two, a privacy fence measuring 10, 10 feet high will be installed between the adjacent residential lots and the required buffer yard.
Actually, Mr. Hip, I think that's a typo.
Excuse me, Mr. Hip. So that has been amended within the last day to read a six-foot-high screening fence within the buffer yard will be established along the adjacent residential lot lines.
Thank you. I do remember you mentioning that. I apologize. Item, so amend that from 10 feet high to six feet high. Item three, the developer's proposed impervious is capped at 10,000 square feet unless granted a 3,000-square-foot impervious allotment by New Hanover County Engineering. Any further increase in impervious ground cover will require rezoning. Four, exterior lighting, including luminaires and security lights, shall be arranged or shielded so as to, as not to cast illumination in an upward direction above an imaginary line extending from the light sources parallel to the ground. Fixtures shall be numbered such that adequate level of lighting are maintained, but that light spillage and glare are not directed at adjacent property or properties, neighboring areas, or motorists.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hip. We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Five to zero. That item will go to the commissioners Monday, July 22nd at this location at 4:00 P.M. All right, thank you very much. Moving along to item number eight. This is for zoning map amendment application Z 24-10, request by Mattson, Wixel, and Hoyt and Bernie, applicant on behalf of Southeastern Freight Lines Incorporated, property owner to rezone approximately 3.73 acres of a 4.24-acre zone B2 regional business parcel located at 2824 North 23rd Street to CZD AC Airport Commercial for the use of motor freight transportation warehousing to expand existing Southeastern Freight Lines facility. This is a public hearing. We'll hear a presentation from staff. And the applicant and any opponents will each be allotted 15 minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. This time I'd like to ask for the staff presentation. Ms. Ott.
Thank you, Chair members of the board. This application is requested to rezone approximately 3.73 acres from B2 Regional Business District to a conditional AC Airport Commerce District for a use of motor freight transportation warehousing to expand the existing Southeastern Freight Lines facility. Located at 2824 North 23rd Street, the site was originally zoned AI Airport Industrial in 1976. It was then rezoned in 1986 to B2 for more flexibility and a wider range of potential uses. Currently, the site is vacant. It was the previous site of a legal non-conforming manufactured home park. The previous property owners closed the park, and there are no tenants within the project area. Here's an aerial photo with images of the property from different angles. Here are examples of a B2 development. And here are examples of what you might see in an AC district. Here's the applicant's concept plan. Along North 23rd Street is the proposed trailer yard expansion. On the southern portion of the site is the proposed employee parking. Here you can see the proposed stormwater ponds. Access is through an existing drive as well as Southeastern Freight Line facilities. Here you can see the existing mobile homes that will remain and is not included within the project area, as well as the existing laundromat along North 23rd Street. The property currently has full access for employee parking onto North 23rd Street as well as access through Southeastern Freight Line for larger commercial vehicles. There are two state transportation improvement projects in the area. The roundabout at Castle Hain and North 23rd Street will improve the flow of traffic at the intersection. Construction is planned to begin in 2027. The proposed development would generate less traffic than what is, than what the property is currently zoned for. Residential growth in the area, as well as the expanded transportation network on I-140, has increased the demand for commercial services along Castle Hain Road. With Wilmington International Airport expanding, the county has seen other rezonings to Airport Commerce that can directly and indirectly support the airport by creating areas for compatible uses that would not conflict with the airport. The comprehensive plan designates this property as being part of the community mixed-use place type and the employment center place type. Community mixed use includes commercial uses and encourages infill development. Employment center serves as employment and production hubs where office and light industrial uses are easily available. The proposed project will provide a buffer between the employment center place type and the community mixed-use place type development patterns in the area. Staff's recommend, recommendation is based on the policy of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Staff is recommending approval because the proposed use is an expansion of a neighboring compatible use in an employment center place type as well as providing commercial development compatible with a proximity to Wilmington National Airport. The applicant did propose a condition which staff would not recommend applying to this conditional zoning district. Should the zoning be approved, development of the site will be subject to additional development review. This concludes my presentation. Mr. Scott James of the WPO and Mr. Tim Low of County Engineering are here to answer any questions. The applicant is also here and is prepared to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Ott, any questions for Ms. Ott at this time? Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to open public hearing and invite the applicant, Mr. Wixel. And I apologize for butchering your firm's name earlier.
That's okay. My name is Mattson Wixel with Hoyt and Barini. We're the city commissioners for representing Southeastern Freight Lines. We don't have anything to add to the report by staff. I think it was very comprehensive what we're trying to do, and this is a straightforward rezoning. We're happy to answer any questions, and we'll leave it at that.
All right. Well, actually, I think we might, we do have some questions. We don't have anyone signed up to speak in opposition. And it looks like it's your whole team has only signed up in support. So, thank you, and we'll, Mr. Hip, did you have some questions?
I do have a question too. I apologize, I, I did not hear your last name.
Wixel.
Wixel, thank you, Mr. Wixel. In looking at the site plan, is there any chance we can get the site plan up? I guess, well, this, this'll work.
Sorry.
That, that's perfect. So first of all, I want to say, I'm, this is good to see. This demonstrates that our, our business community continues to grow. Our airport is being successful. Transportation, so I'm, I'm excited to see this. I, I, I think it's, I think it would be a great addition. But the only question I have regarding the site plan is the access, the existing access on 23rd Street is a large access. Obviously, that's where a lot of, a lot of trucks and heavier vehicles will come through. There is a new proposed access that's smaller and tends to lead to what can only be described as employee parking. Is that the intent for that access, or is it intended to handle heavier vehicles?
That is one-way egress. So it'll be a loop in the existing entrance. Can I draw on this?
Oh, look at that.
So they would route in through here and exit in this access point. And it would be employees only, so automotive, car-
So not heavy truck, not 18-wheelers or-
Correct. All commercial traffic will be going through the main gate, as is now, and they'll be going into the yard.
All right, thank you.
All right. I, I think we've got a few more questions. Mr. Avery.
Based on your circulation pattern you just showed us, how do you get the big trailers in the trailer expansion yard, lay-down yard? How are you going to get them in and out of there?
What's not shown is the full dimensions of our proposed plans. They, when we design facilities, the typical travel lane is 85 feet. And in this case, we're, we don't have any more room to max out the site. They fully utilize this property now with less room than what we're proposing. And they back in and back out, and their movements are, are interesting in that they, they'll back up and drop a trailer at the dock and unhook. And it's not necessarily that they'll have a full load and be trying to do U-turns around. They'll be splitting off from their cargo and parking their, their trailer in the back here. So there is room for circulation. We don't have any auto turn shown on this, but that's part of TRC, and we're happy to show that it does comply with all their turning requirements.
I appreciate your response. I'm still confused as to how you get in and out of that piece of property where the elevation storage is. Proposed rezoning, we do, you've got proposed trailer yard expansion, which is addressing some nonperformance, I get that. But how do you get through the property from that point? How do you get in there? I haven't, I saw what you drew with the employee only. Can you go, can't you take a truck through that employee parking lot and cross over, can you?
No, sir.
My name is Tanya Powell. I'm an attorney with Maynard-Nixon, representing Southeastern Freight Lines.
How do you make an attorney get out?
I'm sorry. I've sat here this long, I may as well talk about something. The flow between the yards and the proposed trailer yard is here. Right, Ryan. Okay, so-
Is that what you're asking about?
So that's the connection?
That, yes, that would be the connection.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I clearly see it now. I'm sorry I wouldn't pay enough detailed attention to it.
Yeah.
It will, it will go like this.
There you go.
And go back in and come back out.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So I thought, didn't hear you correctly on that. I thought you were asking how they're going to turn around inside the facility.
No, thank you.
All right. And I've got a question on stormwater-related. Obviously, you're showing some ponds. And understand, at this level, you haven't done a full design. You've got a lot of impervious there, and with our, with our design storm events being pretty massive, have you already looked at those and gotten an idea? Are you allocating yourself enough space for the, the design storms that we have in this area?
Yes, we have reviewed typical BNP's for this area. And again, that will be done with full drainage studies and whatnot with TRC.
And really, and that wasn't a fair question to even ask, but I guess really, my real question is, do you already have an outlet designated? Because that is one of the things, because we are kind of locking into a site plan. Typically, those systems are oriented to where you know that you have an outlet. And just asking if you have an outlet and if you could tell us where those are for both of those systems.
Sure, this is a concept site plan, so there, is there a way to erase the line work on here? There are existing drainage patterns through the site right now that are hard to tell in this aerial because it's been faded out. But there is a ditch along here that cuts through the site and goes up through here, and then also a ditch that runs about through here. So again, this is part of the full study would be going through what it impacts, and, but we would be tying in into this ditch. And it's still a little to be determined on the final locations for those outlets. But we'd be tying into the existing drainage system.
Okay. And that was really a question because I didn't want you to get tied into a land plan necessarily and not accommodating that. But obviously, it sounds like you have, so thank you for answering that. Any other questions from the board? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, I, with no, no one's signed up to speak in opposition, I'll close the public hearing and open it just for board discussion. Or I'll entertain a, a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Sorry, say that again. I do. I'd actually like to, before we proceed with the vote, I'd like to invite the applicant back to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition, request a continuance, or proceed with a vote?
Proceed with the vote, please.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, yes, Mr. Matthews.
I'd like to move, recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan because the proposed use is an expansion of a neighboring compatible use with the employment center place type. Also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and is in the public interest because the project will provide commercial development that is compatible with its proximity to Wilmington International Airport. The applicant has proposed a condition requirement, requiring that development of the property will be in accordance with the concept plan. However, however, it is required that for any conditional zoning district, accepting any minor modifications allowed by the ordinance. As a result, staff would not recommend including this condition in order to avoid future misunderstandings of its intent.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, five to zero. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
All right, that's the last item. We have a staff update item. Ms. Raw.
Yes, so as we experienced this month, we also have a very heavy agenda it's looking like for your July 11th meeting. So as discussed at your agenda review on Tuesday, if you wish to meet early again on July 11th at 5:00 P.M., then we would need an official motion and vote to modify your calendar.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
I got a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We would like to amend that starting time.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other items? All right, I'd like to-
We dismiss.
Make a motion for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Let me adjourn this wonderful meeting.
Second.
All right, adjourn.